The date is October 5th, 2017. Time is 3:03. Thank you. I thought it was loud enough as it was. We will start with a roll call from my far right.
Sandy Pratt, Hillburg.
Allison Bell.
Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present and we do have a quorum. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will make a motion at this time that we convene in executive session with regards to action item 3A, discussion or consultation with the attorney or attorneys of the board for legal advice and to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding the district's solar energy contracts pursuant to ARS sections 38-431.03A 3 and 4. The attorney or attorneys may participate in the meeting by telephone communication. Do I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We will adjourn in executive session. Okay. Thank you. I know.
Fine, my grand. Fine, my.
Is that it right there?
Yeah, it is. I was looking for something else. I thought I had something else.
Is this effective? Do I have to?
We can just park on mine.
Are we recording? We good? He's giving me the thumbs up.
Can he hear me?
Do you see mine? How do I know where mine is?
He's good. Good.
There's on there.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for your patience. I will call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale.
Where did we?
We did do that.
Exactly.
Yes, we did. So we opened the door and we closed. We, yeah. I, I. I will call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is October 5th, 2017. The time is 4:20. We will have a roll call starting from my far right.
Sandy Pratt, Hillburg.
Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present and we do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin our first information discussion. Item 3A, discussion of potential buyers for property located at 3811 North 44th Street, Phoenix, Arizona, A5118, AKA former district education center. I believe we have one board member that is recusing herself from this discussion. Board Member Hartman confirmed. All right. So Dr. Birdwell, would you like to start off this discussion?
Thank you, President Perleberg and governing board members. We have with us today our guest realtor. Nate Nathan is here and we thought it was important to have a conversation. You know that we've moved forward with negotiation of a contract with Hospice of the Valley on that particular lot, but like a home sale, sometimes you get backup offers. And we thought it was important to share with the governing board the backup so that you knew and were kept appraised of that. Many of you have asked one-on-one, what's the progress? How are we doing? So we've invited them to come and share that information with you. And the podium mic is live, Nate, so when you, so you get recorded, I'm going to ask you to stand behind the podium if you don't mind.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'm honored to be here. We're honored to represent you. It's been quite a bumpy road since 2015. I won't relive the entire process, but when we first started, we were, you had a transition going. You hadn't raised, your bonds hadn't been approved. We had a market that was still in the doghouse except for multifamily. We went on a very detailed lengthy process in interviewing Sal DeCecio, the city, Al Stevenson, the city manager, making sure when we went to market, we knew what we were talking about, and we did. And we went to the market, produced about 11, 12 offers, did the four final and best, and we achieved numbers that were above our asking price. We came out about $27 a foot. It was based on densities. And we did a methodical process the first time around to make sure the city was okay with the density. Well, they were. The neighbors, however, weren't. And, and our buyer, who did a very nice diligent job as far as uncovering several things that we did not know about the site. First of all, it was a half acre less than what we thought. It had some environmental issues. It had a blanket easement from ADEQ that they could drill anytime, anywhere if they wanted to, and couldn't build anything on the site because they could destroy the building, whatever. So we, we started to work on the densities. It went from 170 units to 134 units, and the market was still kind of in the doldrums. They went to the public. The public went crazy, I think you all know. And basically went down the city as you were having personnel transition also. And we met with them, and the problem with the site is that it has a general plan of school. See, they can't recommend a general plan amendment on any density because it's a school. And so they had no direction. So we went from 170 units to the potential of 50. So the buyer tried to ask for a price reduction, and that's when Dr. Birdwell took over. And she said, what do we do? And I said, kick 'em out escrow. The market's way better. Your bonds were approved. It's worth more than what we're asking. We don't really know, but people keep calling. We keep fielding calls. Long story short, we generated three offers on the site. I first was approached by Paul Gilbert directly, and he said Hospice is going to make an offer. And I said, well, you know, we're going to adjust the price. We don't really have an official asking price, but we think it's worth about 4.4 to 4.7. And he said, I'm getting you an offer. Okay? And we went out, or we didn't go out. They delivered an offer after a couple of weeks. We had several conversations, and then we got their offer. It was a letter of intent, 4.4 million. Our recommendation in a memo we had sent to you was, look, if we're going to open it up, if, even though it's kind of been open, we'd probably come out about 30 bucks a foot, which is 4.7, which would include another broker, et cetera. So we got the offer 4.4. They'll pay their broker. We then got another offer just recently from a company called LGE. LGE is a very prominent commercial office, retail developer. They're doing a whole bunch of projects themselves all around town, but they want to incorporate retail into the project. They want to make their home office. We don't have as much detail of their exact site plan because we've said to, as we were going through this process with Hospice, we said, look, here's the deal. The old package you have said 3.5 acres. What we discovered in the process is it's just about 2.97 to 3 acres. So we need to know, in talking with Dr. Birdwell, you've looked at the site, you accept the price, you accept the size, and we know what site plan it is you're going to do. So they did a mock site plan. They actually ran it by Sal DeCecio, which I'll talk about again in a minute, and it worked perfectly for them. They said, great, we can do it. Wonderful. LG has not done that, but the problem we also learned through the process is the issue that you have on Indianola, the traffic, the maintenance of the road. We can use that area for density on the site, but we don't really want to sell it, or if we do sell it, then we have a permanent easement, so you have joint maintenance of that area for the school and the owner, Hospice, or whoever it is you guys decide to go with. And we work it out that way. Okay? So the, two weeks ago, or maybe a week and a half ago, both LGE and Hospice have been meeting with Sal DeCecio. And as you know, this is his district, and he is quite prominent in this district. And he came up to me at the restaurant and said, I just want you to know, I've been approached by LGE, I've been approached by Hospice, that Hospice is the best thing that could ever happen to me, the city, the school. That's what I want. If you go, if I have any say at all, which he doesn't, you know, I really, I really have to, by the way, because it's been a long process with him. But he said, it is perfect for the neighborhood. The neighbors will love it. I'll support it. Jim Waring, everyone else at the city, it's awesome. I said, okay, duly noted. You know, with the two churches across the street, Scientology and the Mormons, I'm in the school, liquor and retail, I think that's going to be somewhat of an issue with the neighbors. We did get a third offer from a company. It came out of the blue. I have no idea who they are. They're not sure what they want to do to the site. It's $4 million. They're waiting for some kind of response from us. We checked them out. They're a big company, but we just, it's a wild card as to what their end use is. And I couldn't stand up in front of the board and say, this is really a good use. It's as good as Hospice. It's as good as LG, whichever one you guys go with. But that's where we're at today. They're all bugging the crud out of me to hear from me. And I've said, we're going to have a board meeting at some point, and I'll have direction as to where you guys want to go.
So governing board, we have, we have the authority under the board to go forward with Hospice of the Valley unless I heard differently today from you, we're going to continue to move forward with that sale. But I really felt due diligence. Anytime somebody brings in a contingency, it's my obligation to share it with you. So I thank Nate for coming and sharing a little bit of that understanding. But unless today you are advising me to go back out to the market, we're going to move forward with the negotiations of that contract with Hospice of the Valley.
Board Member Becca.
So what is the offer?
The offer is $4.4 million. It's subject to their special use plan approved by the city of Phoenix. I don't remember the exact earnest money, but they put up, I have an offer right here. Hold on a second. They have $50,000 to open, or $25,000 to open, additional $50,000 earnest money after the due diligence period, and they pay $4,350,000 a close of escrow, which we're estimating is about nine months to a year at the most.
Same page.
Yeah, most everyone was exactly the same. Yeah.
The last thing I, the last part I want to note is, I did meet with the CEO of Hospice of the Valley and talked about the educational component and the curricular opportunities for our students. And that partner is very willing and wanting to, the physician in charge of that facility wants to work with high school students in understanding later care as well as Alzheimer's and working with Alzheimer's patients. So there's an opportunity for our students to have intern experiences, and I think that is extremely valuable for teenagers today and what we could do with our Arcadia High School.
Board Member Kirby.
Dr. Birdwell, have we had those conversations regarding Hospice of the Valley?
I have. I spoke with Wally Graham, one of the HOA chairman, I think is the term that they use, and shared with him information about Hospice of the Valley. He was ecstatic about that opportunity and felt that was such a better fit than the original group that we had worked with. So thus far, the community is very excited about the potential opportunity.
Board Member Becca.
If you go back to the, I understand you're leaving for a street.
Well, it turns out that the neighbors all around, 360 degrees, are all ticked off about the traffic that goes up and down their streets and Indianola, and it's right turn in, right turn out. There's all kinds of restrictions on the different developers. When they met down with the city of Phoenix about traffic control, about lights, and it was confusing to the city, it was confusing to the developers. And basically, Indianola is a very important access, two times a day, 8:30 or something, and then 3:00 or whenever they leave. And.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is one of two exits, if I am correct.
Yes. And the conversation, thank you, and President Perleberg, governing board, I spoke with, that was one of the conversations I had with Wally Graham, and he came in and we put the maps up and we pulled everything up. And I've worked with our in-house folks a few times, and we're going to get the city engineers over there, but quite honestly, right now, there is no other option at Arcadia. So it is, it is a main road for us. That is access we would not give up because it would send all the students out to Indian School.
Yeah.
And that would be a major traffic jam. So that, that, that little street, little teeny space is critically important to us as far as access and, and of course, leaving Arcadia High School.
In the course of the last two and a half years, it has been, other than density, it was the biggest problem that developers had with the city of Phoenix. Where they could get in, where they could get out, is it podium parking? Is it underground parking? Right turn in, right turn out on 44th. It's a mess, and Hospice has none of those issues.
So if we sell this property to any, and I just keep one of these buyers up, do we have any recourse or, so that they can't keep a thousand in three years if they sell it, but somebody else wants to do something else?
Your attorney.
Is it in on it?
Your attorney is working on an agreement that's you're either selling it to them with a permanent easement and there's mutual maintenance of that, or you're going to keep it and lease it to them, and you have mutual maintenance. I haven't seen the contract yet, but it's, we're all over it because.
You have to work out the, the.
Yeah. And, and the other buyers candidly have not done any homework and don't understand it. They haven't site planned it. Hospice has, we made them. Dr. Birdwell said, what is it? And I said, well, let's, before we do anything, let's get their site plan, which we did, and it's very low impact to the neighborhood. Some of it's single-story. There's a one, two-story building, but it's, you know, Hospice and low traffic.
And Hospice is not concerned about our traffic interfering with their facility. And when I spoke to the CEO, they had no issues in regard to shared maintenance, and so they're very open to the contract that we have Gus Rosenfeld working on.
And I just want to, once a month, another buyer's property, they can turn around and sell it at any point in time, so that's why it's so important to have that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Makes one, of course, with Hospice. You're here.
Right. We're on it.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments or changes in direction? I hear none.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank then our realtor. I want to thank Ms. Marshall and the legal team, and we're all working closely together, but we're really appreciative to continue to move forward, and Hospice is ready for us to move forward as well. So thank you. And Ryan, right? Ryan, thank you for being.
I do have one question. In response to the other buyers, what am I supposed to say?
You can tell them that we are moving forward with Hospice of the Valley. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, nice to meet you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move directly to our information discussion. Item 3B, comparison of SUSD fiscal year 1617 approved budget versus our fiscal year 1617 actual budget. Ms. Smith is kicking us off. I take us? All right. Myself and Board Member Kirby seconded.
All right. All right, governing board members, thank you very much for this captive audience we have. And as we close out fiscal year 2017, you all will be signing this later. This is actually the AFR, and I also have.
I guess, just to confirm, this is the comparison?
Yes.
Of the, okay.
Yes, it is. And because it goes back and forth later on, the action item is to approve the AFR, so I thought it would be easier to kind of do them. The vote is not now, the vote is afterwards. Okay? So this is, in, in this, in the AFR, is the comparison of the two years. It's a piece in there, so it's easier to combine that. But the focus of a unified school district or a school district is obviously to educate kids, but behind the scenes, there's a lot of classified transactions that go on, so this is about the only time I can bring this to the board. The type of work that we do, the purchasing department process, over 8,000 purchase orders, accounts payable, paid 37,000 invoices, HR process, 6,800 EPARs, payroll payments, over 74,000, 90,000 receipts. Jeff's team was very busy on top of home-to-school routes. He processed over 1,000 field trips. And we currently have 249 active student clubs. Forgot head sound.
Sound effects.
They sound worse. And in addition, HR processed 1,700 volunteers. Uh-oh, we have a sound issue. That bus, you gotta shut the bus off. New hires. 18,000 enrichment vendors are currently at the schools. 1,200 kids are enrolled in kids' club. There. Good job.
We know racing buses in this.
The last time I do that. It was so much fun. Oh, that'd be a whole nother topic, wouldn't it?
It's going to be raining.
Why is it? Oh, I need it over here.
It's raining.
Yeah, I am. I just have to do what it was and quit fighting?
I think we got two.
All right. Where is it?
There you go.
We're not doing that all over again. Let's do the, there's Jeff and his team. Okay. And so there's 1.75 million miles put on the school buses and 1,500 transportation work orders completed, which is pretty amazing when you think of the bus fleet that we have. And there's 5,000 kids that ride a bus a day. Patty's been busy with her team. It's a, she actually makes a profit in our food service, building, sorry, I thought I had the food service. 20,000 work orders by Dennis's team. We have 18 groundskeepers that keep up with 35 acres. And then food service comes in. We've served our kids 618,000 breakfasts, a million four lunches, and 44,000 summer meals served. And then last but not least are the snacks. And don't forget IT. Thank you, IT. 16,000 work orders. When we go into discussions about AFRs or about budgets, you have to pay your people first. So this, the purpose of this chart is to highlight that we spend 64% of our budget on salaries and benefits. So as our, our goal is to get more dollars to the classroom and raises, it's something we either have to grow our people, grow the enrollment, or you can pay people more or pay more people.
More?
Yes.
Just a quick map. Because often your mayor's saying the public school system, eighty, over 80% is spent in salaries, in salaries and benefits.
Yes.
Make that 80% just for the 30% of the.
Oh, okay, yes. There are two different charts here, but you can't have one without the other. So what I did, because at the June board meeting, this was brought up, is what, what do we do on other years? And especially when you have a different management team come in, the perspectives are a little bit different. So one thing I want to point out, this is just M&amp;O. This is just the top part of your AFR that you were given and broken out by program and function. And that is the 15 AFR, which means 2014, 15, that's actually what we spent. 15, 16 is the next column. The year that you'll be approving later on is the 17. And then we put on there what you approved at the 18 budget. So you can see that the teacher salaries have come up and the benefits are fairly consistent. We, and basically I have this on here so that you can see those differences. The difference, big difference between 15 and 16 is Prop 123 came in and we passed the AFR. I mean, we passed the override, the M&amp;O override and the AFR. So the first section is your, your, this is all classroom. This down here is your guidance counselors, your SLPs, your PTOs, or not PTOs, PTs, OTs, registrars. The 2,200 is your curriculum and your libraries, your media. And when we look at the AFR, if you've noticed that before, you'll see the differences. There's a huge difference in this 2,300, which is what they refer to as the general admin line, and that would be all cabinet members and the superintendent. You see a big jump here. And I'd like to explain that what that is, is last fiscal year, we, two years ago, the auditor general changed the USFR so that cabinet members would be coded to this function because we report directly to the superintendent. Prior, these people in 16 were in other lines. For instance, a head curriculum person was on this line. This went down quite a bit, but it helped towards the jump here. The same thing with business services. You'll see another reduction there. So in order to let you know what that difference is, had the same people or the same positions been coded here as it should have been the year before, this number here would be 1.1 million dollars. And then last year, we had quite a few admin that we blocked out their vacation pays. So it's not that we hired more people. We just did a reorg according to the USFR. And so then the next one is the school administration. And then this is business services here, and you can see, once again, there's a drop here, and you actually had Mr. O'Brien and myself here. But because we reorged and we got pushed up to the general admin, it makes this look like it went down when really it's just a little piece from each pie. Some of these, you'll see a big difference here. It's not that we're going shopping here. This is part of the current year funding, when we needed to hold back money in case the kids didn't come. This was one of the pots that we put it in so that it couldn't be expended. This is Dennis's plant operations here, and you can see he does fine on that. We did increase this 66 for this year quite a bit because we weren't sure of the effect of utilities during construction. And you always want to be careful on that. This is our, our bookstores. Over here is our co-curricular, which is the extra duties that teachers get for stipends, clubs, the band. Down here at the 62, 200, or 620 function is our athletics, so they're very stable. This is a subtotal of the whole first block of your annual financial reward, or report. So this is what they refer to as general education as compared to special or transportation. So we have quite a bit of a jump here. But once again, that's because we built our budget with a larger amount of students that we, that we had the prior year. Any questions, comments so far? Yes?
Board Member Kirby.
So if you go back to the very first slide, it's the high level. If I look at this year, 15, 16, 17, what is the percentage of salaries?
Yes.
It's about 30%. 15, 16, 17, and if the budget for 18, you just have to clarify.
Yes. Yes, I can address that. The one thing you have to remember is that this is a budget here at 18. When we do vacation buyouts, when you get paid out for your sick leave or your, or your buyout, it is coded to a 6,200 level. So it's a pot you want to have in there right now to hold on to it because as teachers leave or any other function leaves, that's where the money goes. And the other thing to remember is these are budget control groups as a budget function so that all of these lines can stay on that.
So if I can read, read each of the members saying, so we budget as in everyone's, what is taken by?
There's, there's quite a bit of room in there for that, yes.
Is that required by law? And do we have the responsibility to look historically at what's been taken in budget for that law?
I did look at that over the last, I think, five years to see, and only one year was the right amount really close, and that was the year the override went into effect because nobody wanted to leave. So last year, they had budgeted about $700,000, and we spent close to $2 million. So that gets brought over as, as it's needed. So I wanted a little more there. It could be, it can be reallocated as, as needed. Board policy.
So new budget, as in everyone's budget plan?
There's quite a bit of room in there for that, yes.
Is that required by law? And do we have the flexibility to look historically at what's been taken in budgets for that one?
I did look at that over the last, I think, five years to see. And only one year was the right amount really close. And that was the year the override went into effect because nobody wanted to leave. So last year, they had budgeted about $700,000, and we spent close to $2 million. So that gets brought over as it's needed. So I wanted a little more there. It could be... It can be reallocated as needed. Board policy here doesn't restrict when someone has to tell us when they're going to retire. Many districts, by March, you have to say if you're going to retire like fifteen months later in June so that you can put it in the budget. But we... That's not our process here. Mm-hmm.
Oh, good, okay.
All right. So now we go into our special ed, which also includes gifted and bulkhead. These are our classroom salaries and benefits. This is the OTs and PTs and SLPs. And then this is the 2,200 function. And once again, all of these can be grouped up. And at one time, when the budget first came into being, these would have been all grouped up. These are the rest of these are after the fact. So you'll see that at this point in time in fifteen, these people all look like they're employees. And now there may be employees or they may be a purchase service. And it may be a reduction in cost according to services. This was a legal cost, which is why there's an admin cost at the special ed function. The rest... It's just normal. This fifty-six dollars was actually a cost of an alarm going off that was set off in the special ed department, so they got the bill. Isn't that right, Dennis? We know who does it, so there you go. And so you can see that we're very consistent here. One thing that I am required to check, which I don't have on this presentation because I figure you can only take so much at one time, is we do a maintenance of effort, which is for special ed or for JTED, you have to prove that you spent as much per pupil, not just the same dollar amount because it varies by the weights. This is transportation, and you'll get a little bit more of this later. But you can see that there's a larger number here for budget purposes because fuel costs went down a few years ago. You can see in sixteen, there's a big difference between fifteen and sixteen because the price of fuel went down. As oil goes down, price of tires goes down. But you never want to plan for that to stay that way. So there's a little extra here. This is our DSEG dollars. And you can see that we have a little less here in benefits. A lot of that was used as a year closed out for employee health insurance. We have a little bit different system in place now, so I changed that. The K3 override ended in fifteen. That was the end of that one, so that's why it doesn't occur anymore. The dropout prevention looks a little odd because we have so much over here. But in the budget, you only have one line. And in the AFRs, you have different functions. So it's split out between two lines. The total is this whole amount as compared to just this. So when the AFR ends, it'll be split out again. This is a special... We've never had this fund. And this is our K3 reading, which you can see is very consistent. So over the last few years... Oh! This is our M and O transfers to energy and water savings. So that is money that we pay for things. So we get an invoice. We have to transfer it over to our energy and water savings fund. And this jumps up because we have midstates in that will have to start paying back.
Well, Mr. Kirby. Thank you. So can you remind me of... I'm gonna look... Can you see what I'm...
Mm-hmm.
What is the one? Can you remind me what that number was? And as now I'm seeing them, what that means with that?
Um... I'm thinking it was four or five million dollars that we had put away. And we put it in the classroom supplies and we put it in the business supplies. We have a little bit here and there. Right now, the enrollment is down, so... And we also only allocated out to the schools. We held back twenty percent. And those allocations were based on the prior year hundredth day counts, which are just now coming in. So that's where the money is.
So to continue that for a reason, make sure I understand it. So if budget dollars are not dollars, that it's a whole limited company that we can allocate some of our...
Right. At the next board meeting, we'll be doing a revised budget. But you're right. This is a budget capacity, and that is the capacity that we set our tax rates on. And so that is what is in the system. This is the first year of current enrollment. All other years, you wouldn't do any fluctuations because it's based on the hundredth day and it stays that way. This year, it's going into current year. So our budgets could do this literally all year long. So... Yep.
None of these numbers... This is a true statement. None of these numbers have the...
No. No, that's a state grant. That's in another fund. This is just M and O.
So the ones that don't make you comment, you reflect it like a...
No.
No.
No, it's a different fund. It's similar to a grant. It's a state fund, so it will be pot... And it put into a pot of its own. I think it's four thirty-nine?
So is this...
No. Has no effect on that. That's... Yep. Good question, though. So we did the pie chart at the beginning, and it just is reflected here. But overall, this is total salaries that is paid. All funds... I mean, all functions in M and O. So you can see there's a little here. We gave a raise this year, too. So those salaries are gonna... That's part of the reason why they're up. And there's also some of that unallocated amount in there. I see a calculator going, so I'll be ready. All right. So that's the comparison on there. The dollars in the classroom, I know we're always interested in that. So based on if the budget stays the same, this is the way it would play out. You can see transportation stayed very flat. Student support is gonna be your 2,100s. Once again, the counselors, the plant operations, and then obviously the dollar in the classroom. But remember, this is where we have our contingency money as well.
I'm sorry. Can you go back there? I'm getting a little confused. Is the dark blue line, is that fiscal year seventeen?
The light blue is new. It goes...
The light blue is new.
This is the newest to the old. FY... Estimated seventeen is the light blue, and the thirteen is the dark blue. Yes.
Can you just... Is there a...
Yeah. It's true, but seventeen doesn't come out till this coming February. What they do is they take all the district AFRs and they take our audit files. And then the Auditor General takes all that detailed information. In the next few months, anything that looks odd to them, they call the districts and follow up and say, you know, gee, your plant operations went way down. Can you explain what happened? Or can you verify?
Well, I have my...
As far as? Like this thing that stands out like a sore thumb?
Yeah.
Oh. I would be curious if that was correct coding would be part of it. It's a big jump. It's almost... It would be very hard to get sixty percent, fifty-eight... Fifty-nine percent to the classroom, but it is doable. But at the same time, your admin was up a little bit, so I'm not sure. Did you not have any instructional support there?
So the dark blue is four years ago.
Yes.
The light blue is for doing...
This is an estimate based on this annual financial report.
For me, I get nervous when I see administration going down, classes going down, plant operations going down. Thank you, transportation.
It's that bus.
So I do get nervous about plant operations and administration.
Okay. Well, the plant operations, remember, we have some of our excess dollars there because we have building going on. And while they're building on these sites, it could drive up the utility cost. Okay? The administration is due to the reorganization and by following the USFR. Okay? I can't... That should have been higher last year because the coding wasn't right.
Okay.
Okay? And so the dollars in the classroom, even though we have... Yes. It's not easy when you're on the train making... Changing courses.
And I... You said all the course of presentation.
It's a lot.
Right.
Good, and you found that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I have a question. Maybe this is a rhetorical question because no one here, I think, was here during that time. Is that 2013? Would that be the time our district was possibly making a choice to include some utility costs in the classrooms? Is that possible?
That's what I said. Incorrect coding, yes.
Okay.
Incorrect coding.
All right.
That was a polite way to say that.
It sounds about right. I'm timing. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
That's very true. If you take these... This util... If this was utility dollars and you drop it over here, you can see that that would bring that a little bit more in line.
Right. Right.
Sure?
So... Yes. Well, remember Beckham.
I just want to say for the record, this is Brad's friend who won this award. Graciously, I'm glad to see her. She goes through this line by line. I want to talk to her and explain it to us.
So that we could actually understand. And I want to say that, just from a public standpoint, which I don't think that you realize, is that this is finance report. It's a requirement of what you put in per code. So there's a lot of work and tedious work that goes in, so thank you very much. But also your knowledge and expertise with you and Shannon who met with us because you know every code, what's in there. And it gave me, I'll speak for myself, a lot of confidence in what you're doing and in being able to feel comfortable and confident in this report. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well, Board Member Kravitz.
I was gonna say something as well. We spent, it was two and a half hours going over the annual financial report. So if anybody's watching or listening and they wonder why we're not asking questions, that is why, because we spent two and a half hours trying to wrap our heads around this.
And so, thank you very much, Board Member Kravitz. Thank you very much. And I would also like to go through this briefly now because the rest of you have seen it. But as a background piece of information, of course, you don't approve it now, you do later. But since there's no need in reliving this. So one thing I do want to point out, which is something I had brought up, this is a very important page to the finance people. You have not had a positive ending cash balance in M and O since 2012. So I have looked back over this. Obviously, it seems like every day I'm running around doing something else. But today, I did take the time to look. And one of the things that is key to the success of a ending cash balance being in the positive is to look at your revenues and compare it to your expenditures or to compare it to your budget, which you had revenues of 152,000, including any interest. And the only problem is you had a budget of 154 million, and you started three million in the hole. So it's... That was part of that whole tax rate presentation that I went through, if you recall. And when I do the budget revision at the next board meeting, I can tell you that you have the lowest tax rates this year that you have had. I went back as far as 2006. So although at the board meeting, I did present it was possible it would go up, it is actually lower than it's ever been, so...
Wow.
I always... I really like to plan for the best and... Or plan for the worst and hope for the best, so that played out. This is the difference between this year and last year when you see these... This column here. So you can see that this is that number I referred to when we did the reorganization and took people from this line, which is down eighteen percent, but this is up to twenty. But it's really not up to twenty. It's reshuffling. We didn't go crazy hiring six superintendents or paying them more than they should be. It's just a matter of reorganization and coding correctly. What was that?
Hire us up so we can share the burden.
That's right. Somebody can get a day off. All right. So this is all the figures that we went through, just using the totals. So there was absolutely nothing that stood out over me... Over... That was of concern to me. There's that fifty-six dollars that we hit that person for. But like I said, what I was so happy about is we're finally ending with a positive cash balance. Our M and O dollars are fine. We're actually going to roll forward. You'll know at the revision, we actually have more than we had planned on. This is our classroom site fund, which teachers are very interested in, as I would be. But as you can see, we started out with $315,000, which when you're getting almost $2 million, isn't very much. And we ended with $319,000. So we did disperse what we received. This fund is Fund 12, which is your performance pay. That pay is paid in August for the prior year. So you must roll forward what you paid out, basically, the year before. So we had 4.3 million, and we ended with 4 million. So we paid out a little bit more than we received that year. And this fund was at 415,000, and we ended at 198. So this fund's getting a little close because when you have 198,000 out of 3 million, it's not very much money. So that means you have to be really careful and make sure you watch those funds. So the teachers and eligible staff members did receive their payout. This is our capital... This is our DA fund. And this is our old override amount that we carried forward from prior years. And next week, you'll get a very brief slide presentation on that because we legally need to. And you can see the actual expenditures is 3.4. In the year before, we spent 5.4 million. The bulk of that difference is we purchased a building. Let's see. These are just the bond... The adjacent ways, we spent very little. We were rolling it forward because with the construction, we can use that money this year. There is a slight possibility these small... These numbers could change because we're... The auditors are here right now, and there's a discussion over whether the lease purchases should be booked this year or last year. So as a caveat, no, I mean with the midstates energy projects, not lease purchase, the midstate. So if it books this year or last year, would have a change on the construction in progress amount here. These are our grants. These are our federal grants. These are our state grants. And this is where the performance-based funding will get its own fund, and it reports here. This is how we get our indirect cost money, which we use for purposes, any... We can use it for a lot of things. But like, we paid for the move to the MDA from here so that it didn't go to the taxpayers. State grants are not allowed to have indirect costs. This is a summary that pulls from other... All the other reports, or they go over to the next one. You can see down here that this was the bonds that we received money for. We spent this much of it. There'll be a bond report for that at the next meeting. We have some healthy balances. We have some healthy balances. This is our bonds outstanding. This is how the auditor general, for the most part, pulls your classroom in the dollars This is our, this is the number we'll use for our maintenance of effort for our sped kids, to make sure that we're spending per pupil what we need to. This is the cost, this is one of the last-minute adjustments. If you compare this presentation to the one that was emailed to you, this amount was not on yours. And this is where we had some, I believe it was counselors that didn't have a teaching certificate and got performance pay for the year before. So it's not allowed to be pulled from Fund 12. So it, we had to move it over here, which we just aren't carrying forward a little bit. This is tuition we pay out. This is such a fun page to do. And the auditor general looks at this one a lot, because it compiles all funds except for your MNO and your 900 funds, and it takes it back out by function. When Jeff and I do our presentation on transportation, you can see that this is transportation that didn't come from MNO. So it's another 829,000. So you can imagine that came from non-MNO funds, which is sometimes the difference in our cost per mile. In a lot of districts, this is all the governing board seeds and they sign, and off you go. And at one point in time, you used to have to publish this report. You had to pay money, and I think we do in Scottsdale. So this summary report is what is out there. Actually, you can just do it online now, but I do believe that we, we do publish it in the paper. And these funds down here, probably here down, for the most part, are why our bond rating is so good, because we have cash to back up. And that's how you get good bonds. And that's why we were able to sell 39 million in bonds and get 5 million in premium. I think that's about, oh, this pretty much covers. If you want to go into more detail about these, that would be it. And that's our tax rate. So if I can address any questions, I'll be happy to.
Board Member Harmon.
Just a couple of questions and observations. So regarding the AFR, really, I don't have many questions, because it really just is a compliance document.
Mm-hmm.
But I do want to acknowledge that the year-on-year comparison work, I feel like that's the first time we've seen it, because it presented that way. And it's really, really helpful to see it that way. So thank you for doing that.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah. Just a couple, just quick follow-up questions. So on that negative cash flow comment from 2012, I think it was 3 million.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what we're projecting for this year, and what's the implication of that?
Well, as, as everything else, the school rules are always changing. And for this fiscal year was the first time you couldn't, you didn't use your prior ending balance, which was a little bit of a problem for us, because we, we were negative in prior years. We didn't know how this year would end up. But going forward and starting in FY '18, you don't use your cash balances. So, as I pointed out at the June meeting, that they had not accounted for the negative balance, which is part of the reason why we didn't bring in enough revenue this year. The reason why we have such a, such a, the reason why we have an ending cash balance is because we have a large budget balance that we didn't spend. So we should have an additional two, some odd million here.
In fact, is that, that was my recollection, because it was 5 million, right? And so is it 5 million's offsetting the 3 million?
Um, we actually spent 146. The budget was 154, so roughly, that's 8 million. Then you have to take away the 3.6 that you were in the hole you didn't account for. And then you have to take the difference that you needed to collect, the 154 from the 152, that's another 2 million. So yes, we should have another 2.7, maybe, in cash.
Does anything ever happen with that?
Does anything ever happen?
Yeah, I mean, does it just roll forward, or, I mean, because it's not?
Well, in this, in, in the school finance world, if you don't have cash, you can continue to spend. You're, you're not going to look good to bond your rating agencies, but legally, you can spend up to your budget capacity. And if you have more cash than you have budget, you can't spend it.
Okay.
It would be a negative impact, as we sell bonds going forward, so we want to keep that a positive cash.
Yeah, so from a bond rating standpoint.
Right.
It would impact you. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then the last, just question I had was on the tax rate. You talked about our tax rate being the lowest tax rate from our own personal trend, right? From 12?
From Scottsdale Unified School District, yes.
Yeah. And if I recall correctly, just because I think it's worth saying, we also have one of the lowest tax rates.
Yes.
Across the entire.
Yes.
Maricopa County area, maybe state, but definitely Maricopa County.
Yes. And if you'd like, at the next, I could do two slides. I could do the, our tax rates, and then I could do some comparison of what they were this year for the other districts.
Yeah. I don't think it ever hurts sharing that with the public.
No.
So, it'd be great.
I'll put that other piece on my to-do list. No easy, no worries.
Thank you.
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you for the presentation, for the work. And I agree, the side-by-side comparison, spot on.
Okay.
And it's very helpful. Can you, which fund, or can you go into the financial report and show me, when we sell, sell the Ed Center?
Oh.
Where did, where will that money go?
It's gonna go into the school plant fund. Which started there, and that was revenues. This is what we actually spent. Now, the rules changed as of June 30th, 2016, which means this is the first year the new rules are going to go into effect. Depending on your debt ratio, it depends if, if you're talking about if we sell this, is this where we're going? What could we do with this? Upon further research and confirming where our indebtedness is, there's a percent that would have to go against that, and there's a percent that it would have to be used in, in capital expenditures. So we could use it to offset some expenses, but I wouldn't want to say at this point in time, till I confirm that, what exactly that is. Because there was, like, a third of it has to go against bond indebtedness, and the balance could be used for other capital expenditures.
So when you say other capital, does, is that, that's not capital override kind of capital?
No, no.
It's, it's buildings and?
Yes.
Equipment and?
Yes. Exactly.
Thank you.
Or it could sit here. In, in this fund. It doesn't, these funds don't revert.
Okay.
So therefore, if you end the money, if you end with the money, it doesn't get taken away.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'll, page, I think it's on your page three, and it does go back to when we were looking at the bar lines of 13 through 17. I, I believe they are the numbers that build the auditor general's famous, infamous pie chart. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just to be accurate there.
Which one? The, the graph chart that I had?
Yeah. But it was actually, I mean, I, I agree with Board Member Kirby, that looking at that and knowing our community and, and understanding how everyone looks at that pie chart, you know, it's, it's not in our favor. But what, what specifically caught my eye then, is when you, a couple pages downwards, the actual dollars, and you have the percentage gain or loss in each of those categories.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's just a couple pages after that.
This is salaries.
Right.
Benefits, but the other one.
It was, it was more specific, it was more.
Yes.
Or lined out.
There's a.
Yeah, it was farther down.
Let's see. Well, the classroom accounts.
But it had those, it had those breakouts, and showed a specific percentage gain, loss, or, or change.
Oh.
Change.
Okay. Yeah, I know where that is.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're talking.
Yeah, I mean, it was something more like that.
Right.
There you go.
Now, if you take your.
So if you go back to, I think there's another page, because what you see is that 224%.
Yes.
Which is, I, I.
That's the admin.
That's, that's our general and, administration line, 2300.
Mm-hmm.
You've got the 224% increase.
Yes. Let me address that again.
To, well, I mean, let's, yes, let's talk realistically.
Okay.
What that is, and how this district will communicate that, because, I, I mean.
I understand.
Of course, our community has a lot of skepticism around.
Right.
Those numbers changing, and, oh, but we have a good reason for that.
Right. Okay.
It's not, it's not what it looks like.
So, this is an area where we have, this is curriculum. In the old year, they didn't code it as a head of department that reported to the superintendent. So, that's why there's a difference here of a half a million dollars. Because that person got bumped up to here.
Okay.
That's part of the 220.
Okay.
When the district went to a flat organizational system, where everybody was an executive director, they put them out in different departments.
Right.
And didn't assign them into that administrative piece. And so.
Right.
In, in creating not only the reorganization, but also proper coding, put people where they belong, you see this initial piece, even though the dollars are not an increase necessarily to the budget. And then, for those who left, and many positions that are new faces in those seats, those people who left under the policy of the district were allowed to have vacations purchased, which was at, at a very high cost to the district, about 2 million dollars were purchased out in, in benefits.
Mm-hmm.
Accrued, accrued vacation.
Accrued vacation.
Accrued vacation that is required to pay out.
Yes. So not only did they move their salaries, but as they left, the entire expense they had earned at other functions were now charged to this one. And so what you have, is you have executives that were coded to their line here, like, we had curriculum people. We had business managers, finance directors, and that sort of thing. So this 2,500 looks like it went down 18%. Well, you know you picked up, you had two of us last year, so you know it went up. But it didn't go up on this line, because it was coded to this line, where it should be coded. Because I'm not in here doing journal entries. I'm not in here doing the day-to-day. I, I do the heavy lifting and make sure that those roles are done. So that drives up this cost. Had they been coded correctly, I think it was on the PowerPoint, let me go back to Right here. This is the line that everyone's gonna pay attention to. Because it looks like you're going up, basically, a million dollars. But the other lines are going down, because this salary in this year went down to here.
Yeah.
And the 25s, which are on the next page, came up to here.
Right. Well, and, and that's what is the communication issue.
Right.
Is to define the fact of, it's not that there are actual bodies.
No. Not additional.
Coming out of here.
Right.
And being added here, it is literally.
It is, it is the management being a management.
It's the same. And that's a tough message. But, Board Member Kirby.
Okay, so I'm processing. Is it a combination of going from this flat organization to a, more of a pyramid structure, as well as the flat organization had miscoding? Or was it just the change in the structure drove different coding?
Well, the, the change in, in the structure drove the coding, but the other should have been coded correctly, and it wasn't.
And it wasn't.
And it wasn't.
So it's a little bit.
Right.
It's, it's a little bit of what we experienced in 2013 with the utilities.
Right.
Being coded to the classroom.
Exactly.
Right.
And so, were they being, in the, in the prior year, were they weren't being properly coded? Were they coded to classroom instructional?
Is it potato, or is it patato? You can make the argument, but the point is, is that we are doing it correctly, because we are paying, playing by the rules, and we are using the role to, to decide what function it goes in. Whereas Mr. Nance could be, Dr. Nance could be coded to, in the old years, they would have put him here. Because he's curriculum.
So there's an, if I might, I don't know if this will help. There are those who take the AFR literally, and they're very strict to the rules and adhere to it. And then there are districts that I have seen that interpret, such as utilities in the classroom. And until someone calls you out on it, they, they tend to try to move coding around, because there is a huge pressure in school systems to show more dollars in classroom and less, fewer dollars in, in administration. That said, we hired a CFO who is a very strong rule follower, and I appreciate that, and am very thankful for it. But we want to be as transparent and real about where the dollars go, so that there is a realistic baseline tracking of that. So when we, we go back and we try to say, well, we're decreasing administrative costs, but the administration is coded into various other areas, it makes it very difficult to really monitor and look at those pieces if you're, if you're, I don't want to accuse people of playing games with coding, but if you're using coding differently, under a different philosophy, you can create a false presentation of data. And in our opinion, the prior years did not code in the.
Strict method.
Strict methodology, and, and well, the spirit of the methodology. Because the spirit of the, of the law under the AFR is, is trying to have us be realistic about what are administrative functions versus curricular functions. Dr. Nance, although focuses his time in curriculum, he is an administrator of curriculum. So we code him in administration. So it, it is a, but I will tell you that this is the part where auditors come in and say, hey, utilities don't belong in classrooms. Yeah, they, the lights come on, but you don't get to put it there, because that's not where the budget allows you to put it. So that's the kind of thing that we're, we've cleaned up a bit. So it is a combination of governing board of clean coding and transparency, along with a restructuring of admin. Call it what it is, they're cabinet members.
Go ahead. Thank you. Any additional, additional presentation or questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. We will move on to our next information discussion item, and that is 3C, SUST Systems and Programs for Effective Student Interventions.
President Perleberg, board members. I have three of my right-hand people, and I have several right-hand people that help me work in the Educational Services Department every day. And these are probably three of the most important right-hand folks I have, and I'd like to just, one more time, introduce them, because all three of them are new to their roles this year in Scottsdale. First of all, our Executive Director of Educational Services, Teaching and Learning, Cheryl Redner. Cheryl spent 20, many, many, many years in the district. I won't even say it. As a teacher and administrator, and then, I don't know, someone hired her away a few years ago to go work in the areas of curriculum instruction, and she's been supervising principals in another district. And we're fortunate to get her back here this year. We also have Dr. Chris Treat. Chris is a curriculum expert, especially in the area of secondary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And he comes to us from the Chandler Unified School District this year. And Michael Roberts spent last, the last few years as principal of an award-winning, nationally-recognized elementary school in the state of Oregon. And he has moved his family here and has joined us this year as the Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction. And they're gonna talk to you this evening about how interventions work in Scottsdale.
Thank you. Good evening, President Perleberg, members of the board, Dr. Birdwell and Sandra. I don't know why we always have to discuss how many years I was in Scottsdale. I don't think it's that important.
You get to turn the rest.
But it's, it's been a, a great run to be back, and we have spent a lot of time together. Our team has, has worked hard for the last couple of months, talking about where we are with curriculum instruction, and of course, looking at interventions. and, of course, looking at interventions and where, where we are now and what our vision is. So, we're gonna spend some time speaking with you today. Um, so, the purpose of, for this presentation, we're going to identify some, some interventions. We're gonna talk about how we use interventions and how we identify our students who qualify for interventions. And we're talking about academic interventions for purposes of this presentation. So, to begin with, some of you have probably seen the three tiers of interventions, again, um, for instruction. And we're gonna, for academic instruction, if we start with tier one, that's your basic first best instruction in classrooms. It's when we have the whole group of students in there with the teacher teaching. You see some things going on that might look a little different from classroom to classroom, but first best instruction. And from there, we look at students, we look at, um, data and decide who needs some targeted interventions. And that number's gonna shift depending on what specifically, what specific standard we're looking at, what subject area we're looking at. And then, we're looking at which students need that support based on data that we provide, and we, um, work with our teachers to provide that targeted intervention. It varies from, again, from subject to subject, it varies in classroom to classroom, but we want to make sure those students who need either targeted interventions, either on the high end or on the lower end, receive that support. And then, the third tier is an intensive support. And we see, um, mu- uh, many people refer to this as some special ed needs, but really, students who need them, and that's a smaller percentage of students, again, that varies. So, it's gonna differ, again, depending on what, um, what specific standard we're talking about. So, there's type, we're gonna identify three types of interventions, and, um, they're gonna talk about that, but we're gonna talk about what differentiation looks like in a classroom. So, when we walk into a classroom, what does it look like? What set aside time looks like in a, in a school? And then, what an intervention, of course, specifically in middle and high schools look like. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Michael, and he's gonna talk about that.
So, uh, I'm gonna start with differentiation in the classroom. So, when we talk about differentiation in the classroom, that is, the whole group is in the classroom, but the teacher might be delivering slightly different information and different levels of support to students. So, for example, if you were to go to a first grade class, and some of the students still were struggling with some of their phonemic awareness or their phonics, the teacher might have them in groups, and she might work with a small group on that specific skill while another group is on grade level, so she might be working with them on some, uh, basic reading skills. And then, she's in the same classroom, still might have some students who might be reading, say, at a third or fourth grade level, so she'll be giving them some more complex text to work on. And you might see her bouncing around from person to person. Also, to facilitate that at different schools, different times, we're able to push additional adult support in to provide, uh, not just support for the students who need the lowest, uh, uh, amount of intervention, but also some who need the highest amount of intervention. One of the exciting things that we did at the elementary and at the secondary level, last year, there's a lot of work done around, uh, math specifically, coming up with interventions that we can put in district-wide and we can support district-wide. Uh, so, the edgenuity at the, uh, elementary level and the edmentum at the secondary level, uh, all of our trainings are done, we're ready to get those kicked off. And a lot of those are gonna be supported in what we call set aside intervention time. So, for example, at every elementary level school, they have a block of time set apart for students who need specific interventions. So, they'll pull those students and give them, uh, in math, they'd give, run them through the, uh, edgenuity program, or in language arts, they'd give them another type of support. For example, uh, at Yavapai, what they'll do is, uh, they have the time set for all of second grade. So, the second graders will go to, uh, the kids who are on level will go to one room in a much larger group. The students who are below level will go into another room with, uh, two licensed teachers and several support people. So, they're working with four and five kids at a time on specific skills those students are struggling with. And it's a way to, uh, get them caught up while still not, uh, costing them any time spent on grade level, um, standards because they do need to, we need to raise them up to grade level standards, not pull them out so they're missing grade level standards to fill other holes, because then we're just creating different ones. So, um, at the secondary level, a lot of times, the, yeah, time set aside is, uh, sometimes a separate class. So, I'll let Dr. Treat talk about that.
Yeah, one of the things that happens when we start talking about secondary education is we talk about much more complex scheduling. It's not just self-contained and putting a person in or pulling groups of students out. But now, we have to build around a, a very large and complex schedule. So, oftentimes, we'll put together specific courses or programs that are designed to still meet the needs of targeted students while also being as, you know, kind of removing as much of the disruption as possible to the rest of their school day. So, what we have here are smaller groups that are allowed to kind of be pulled into this kind of bigger schedule. And I'm thinking of an example over at Ingleside Middle School, where they have the, what they call the WIN program, and WIN is an acronym. It stands for What I Need. And that's very much the embodiment of what, uh, targeted interventions really are. It's giving students exactly what they need. And in that program, which they just began this year, they've shaved a few minutes off their bell schedules one day a week, and they've taken students from their specific courses where they'll go to a period of the day that is kind of leveled and targeted where they're gonna work on specific needs. So, it doesn't disrupt the greater schedule that they have throughout the week. It doesn't pull them into separate classes and, and kind of wreck all their other social structures they've got, but it's got a targeted area where everyone is going to the level that works best for them. The other thing I was thinking about, another example, kind of the way that we use, uh, these sorts of interventions within courses here in Scottsdale, is example over at Suoro High School, where with Algebra I in particular, that's a, that's a critical area in mathematics for students. And we find if they can have success in Algebra I, then they can have ongoing success. So, the folks here at Suoro are putting a tremendous amount of effort into paying attention to the fall success of their students in Algebra I. Students who are struggling after this fall semester, they're actually placing them back into a fall version, that first portion of Algebra I in the spring portion of that year, and then pushing that spring, uh, content into their summer. So, it gives them, again, a specific pullout without disrupting across the rest of their schedule or taking away an elective or something like that. So, again, these are examples of how, within a complex schedule, you can still target students and give them specifically the type of intervention that they need.
So, where are we going? What's our vision? We want to make sure that we're adding to our teachers' and administrators' knowledge of how to use interventions, when they're to use them, and where they're going to use them. So, I want to talk a little bit about our vision and our plan and what we have started. Um, we're providing professional, professional development. So, um, today, we had a principals' meeting, we were able to speak with the principals. Um, Dr. Treat and, um, Mr. Roberts were able to work with the administrators on what a, a functioning PLC, professional learning community looks like and what they, they should be expecting during that time. So, that was a whole group, um, professional development for the administrators. And then, the follow-up is that they'll spend time in the schools, um, working with, with the principals and certainly with the teachers. So, they've been invited out to work with those PLC groups on the campuses and really give some feedback on what's going on on those campuses and help, um, help them with that. And then, as well, we have increased the amount of, um, teacher professional development. So, our teachers have been involved, um, in professional development. We've seen a, a lot of, um, opportunities for them and a lot of input there. We are building viable curriculum apps and benchmark assessments. So, we have started the curriculum app building, and that's, that's twofold, um, as far as our advantages. And so, we were able to start and look at the curriculum apps we had in place, and some of them, we needed some help, some work. And so, we've had the input of all, of teachers, of representatives from all the schools have been part of that map building process. And so, that gives them the buy-in, they have the voice at the table, and then they're working with our curriculum specialists. Our goal from cabinet is to have that finished by April, well, second, because the first is a Sunday, so I bought myself a day. But, um, but we're well on our way, we really are well on our way. Or, or, or some other date that they're gonna, I'm sure, and it really needs to be done much sooner rather than later. But it, it's a huge task, so we're starting with our cores, and we are slowly doing that. And, and the feedback we get is extremely positive. I mean, the teachers get to be part of that. They get to actually rip up the stand, tear the standards apart and put them together and the vocab, not, and, and put them together and understand where and when those standards are to be in place. And that's being, um, that's being overseen by our curriculum specialists. Then, the other part that we're tasked with is working on our benchmark assessments. We want to make sure that the assessments are te- are testing what we're teaching. And that has been a little bit of a learning curve, and, but we are, we're well on our way and, again, building those assessments to make sure that we can provide the data and really have that data so that we know the next steps. If there are students who need interventions, what does that look like? And then, this is specific to benchmark assessments, but this is also day-to-day, also other assessments that we're looking at. So, we're really spending time with our teachers, making sure they're understanding it, being led by our curriculum, um, specialists. We're looking at.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
I've held a couple of questions, but I don't want to hold this on. The curriculum maps, if you can help me understand, is that connecting the, um, standards into the curriculum being used? Is that what you mean by curriculum?
So, curriculum is actually what we are teaching.
Okay.
Versus textbooks or books or supplementals. So, we're working off the Arizona standards to make sure that we're aligned to Arizona standards.
So, you're connecting the standards into, into curriculum maps, I guess, basically.
Correct.
Where, where are we teaching what exactly is what's being reviewed?
So, they're in an order, a sensible order, so that they roll up appropriately so that the students are ready for the following grade.
Yeah, and, and another important piece of that is when you teach it. For example, the first benchmark test should be over what was taught the first quarter. The second benchmark should be over what was taught the second quarter. So, we have to clearly identify for teachers that during this time period, these are the standards you should be focusing on. And we're not telling them what order within that time period, but sometime between the beginning and the end of this time period, this is what you should be doing. And then, the other thing it does is it promotes consistency across our district because every fifth grader is taking the same benchmark in math across this district. So, it's incumbent upon the teachers in those schools to make sure they've covered the same material in the depth that they need to cover it as we move forward. That was not necessarily the case with all of the maps in the past, but it's the goal as we move forward.
And that makes it easier for teachers to share best practices. If, uh, Dr. Treat and I teach the same course and we're on the same place in the map, and his students are performing at eighty percent proficiency and mine is sixty-five, then we can have a conversation about why my students aren't doing as well. It raises the whole, uh, level of instruction across the district.
Thank you. That picture helps.
And, and the assessment shouldn't be a surprise. It should be testing what's being taught. Okay? So, universal screening, so that goes back to data. We want to make sure we have that data throughout the year. We want to make sure that we're using that data and that it's universal for, for many reasons. But we want to be able to use information across the board at a school, at a grade level. And then, students move schools as well. So, we need to be able to have a student come in, whether they're in our district, if they move, um, into a different school, and say, oh, let me look at the data and be able to place him or her appropriately. Or they come in from another school, and we're able to place them appropriately and give them the support they need whenever they enter our schools. Um, and then, this just goes back to analyzing our data to drive instruction. So, we're really spending a lot of time with Dr. McCauley's team, spending a lot of time with data, um, of course, with the AZ Merit data, but really, the day-to-day data, what that looks like, and spending time with our principals, helping them understand and what's best practice to be working in their classrooms. One example of that is we've talked about data rooms. So, this is an example of a data room, and we have data rooms in some, several of our schools. They are growing rather rapidly. And this is an example, um, of student data based on AZ, I believe, on AZ Merit. And can, the, the teachers actually meet in this room for different meetings, and they actually can physically see how the students are doing and move them. They're all by, um, their student number, so, um, no, no one knows them by name. But they, they know where those students are, and they're able to have conversations about them. They're able to have conversations about what interventions are in place, which teachers are spending time with them, what, what, what are we doing, what are the next steps? And we are, our next professional development through the principals is talking about building a data room that's best for your campus. Um, a high school data room's gonna look different than an elementary data room. Um, we have biology teachers differ than physics teachers. I can, I don't have rooms that big, but what does it look like? How can we share that data as a biology, um, community? We're looking at what it looks like in an elementary school. And we've spent time in these rooms already. Our principals had a meeting there last couple of weeks ago, and they were physically taking pictures of what they saw. And they're excited about this, they're able, they're excited to have those conversations with their teachers. They're bringing their teams back to take pictures and help them understand what that expectation is and, and the why of it. What's that, how is that gonna help drive instruction? So, that is our vision for, that's our vision, that's where we are right now.
And I just might add a little to what Cheryl just said, is we did hold our last principal meeting at Yavapai Elementary. Julio Martinez, the new principal at Yavapai, came to us from Las Cruces, New Mexico, um, where he was in, a turnaround school expert. I think he had raised his school from a D to an A in several years period of time in that district and has data rooms and using data down to a science. And he's already gotten the Yavapai staff immersed into this process. And so, we brought the principals to Yavapai, all of them, the elementary, the middle, and the high school principals, last month for their principals' meeting. And, and he gave a little presentation in the Yavapai data room for each group as to, to what they're doing with that. And Cheryl's right, they're, they're taking pictures and writing stuff down. And we've already had some of them take teachers back to have conversations with Julio. So, we are very proud of one of our new principals and what's happening at Yavapai, and, uh, we'll continue to do that. I know we have training rooms set up at Oak where we take teachers. And most of our curriculum map work is being done in our training rooms at Oak. And I believe we have plans to actually create kind of a mock data room at Oak so that we can use it for instructional purposes with the teachers who come there every day for training purposes. So, it's, it's kind of exciting.
It's really exciting. Questions, comments?
Board Member Hartman? So, first, fantastic, fantastic work, and glad you're all here. And, um, Cheryl, I remember being in your office back in two thousand and thirteen when you were at, um, Supi at the time, I think, and seeing your version of data, which we didn't necessarily have the same data, but all on flip charts. And so, it just, which was really amazing, every student was there, and you knew exactly where every student was in the entire school and used that. So, I just see this as like the next evolution with data behind it. So, um, it's, it's really great to see that. Just two kind of general questions. One is, you know, from a continuum standpoint, in terms of, um, intervention and the concept, you know, of pullout and, and I think you called it set aside time and all that, where are we in terms of, um, thinking about and where the possibilities are, like technology or other best practices to support that? Um, I know it's a first things first approach, but are there other methodologies, other tools, other investments for us to be thinking about for the future, and what does that look like?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, there's a, there, there, we probably get a hundred emails a day, an hour, on best practices, on research best practices. We want to make sure we're really using that information. So, we want to make, we're trying to develop some consistency, but giving the school some autonomy as well. Um, but they're using different, we have different pieces in place at different schools, so we're starting to gather that information. Um, I really do believe that principals learn from each other. They're really excited to spend that time together and learn from each other. So, I think that will come together as time goes on. From a technology standpoint, I mean, there, yes. I mean, this edgenuity, we went through the training, uh, and edmentum, and I just saw a report we just started a week ago, we have schools right on board and using it. Teachers want to use this, they want to use the data. So, it's exciting for us to be able to provide that training and, um, and look at the data with them. Um, at several of our schools, we've, um, um, started, we will be starting the second quarter with Read 180. So, that's a research best practice. And so, we have meetings with the company and myself and the principal to look at the data. Where are we with it? What's going on with those students? What's the next step?
With technology, though, you have, you have to balance it because there are programs out there that say, give us your kids who need interventions and sit them in front of a computer for thirty-five minutes and we'll solve all the problems in the world. And those don't work. The best thing about edgenuity, for example, is it's dependent upon the teacher to say, this is the standard the students need support on, and then it will give a very narrow band of, of intervention. So, the teacher isn't succeeding or having the ability to formative, formatively assess the students, taking away from them because the teacher knows best when it comes to where the students need support.
And edmentum on the secondary side is the math intervention program. It's kind of the partner to the edgenuity that Michael was talking about. And it's very similar in that while there is a, a kind of a technological, an assessment that happens, it creates a prescription of some areas specifically to target skills that then goes back in the hands of the actual teacher. So, it's that balance that we're seeking there, where it's not just set them in front of a box, but rather, let's kind of take the best of both worlds here and use a very targeted approach and say, here are some skills the student needs according to, uh, this type of real-time assessment data.
And then, just one more question. Is there an expectation that over time, the amount of intervention actually? Is there an expectation that over time, the amount of intervention actually decreases because you close the gap, or is it just, what does that look like over time?
I think it's very dependent on the student and this specific standard. I think it's going to change. I would love to say that they're all going to understand everything all the time. They come to us with different experiences. But, we see the growth data is huge. When we look at data at a school where some students come with less home experiences, and then we can see that growth right away, we're really focusing on some of that, those celebrations. But, we want to make sure to fill those gaps quickly, so that they have, they're ready for the next grade level.
One of the things to remember about intervention is it's also for high performers. It's also a way to target extra assistance in what they need as well, because everybody needs something. And I don't, you know, unless we have all of our students in the classroom performing at exactly the same level, there's always going to be interventions.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know that it goes away, and I don't know that the goal is to have it go away either, because you're always going to have those outlier students that need a little something extra, whether it be help on one end or help on the other.
And research says that best practice, no matter how good it is, you're not going to hit everybody all the time. So, the key is to become more adept at intervening quicker, and so we can close the gaps quicker, but there's always going to be need for it.
And to Dr. Nance's point, with the gifted students, Dr. Wong is with us as well. So, we really are able to collaborate with that gifted as part of our team. And so, it really is helping us to build curriculum and curriculum maps that involve students at both ends.
Thank you. Board Member Kirby?
Thank you, and I will attest, I've been out in schools and started with the elementary, and I've only hit two middles and none of the high school. But, I loved what you said, consistency with autonomy, because that's exactly what I'm seeing in the schools that are getting their data rooms up and running, or a couple of them already have them up and running, is the core component of it is consistent, but they have all put their spin on it that works for their sites. And so, I want to thank you, for all of you, for getting the consistency we need, but giving the autonomy that they need. Question on the data room timing. Clearly, high schools really hard, I don't even know, I've thought about it, how in the world are we going to do this in high schools, middle schools, not quite as difficult, but you have some similar challenges. And then, even within the elementary, you have someone like Julio at Yavapai, who's very, very familiar and very common and knows exactly how to get it done. Then, we have other principals who this is all new to them. Do we have, you've set a date on yourself, a deadline for April second. The curriculum mapping, do we have any, have we communicated any deadlines for the data rooms to our sites?
I can tell you, our model that we start today, we provided that professional development, and then we'll go into schools, that will be the same model. So, as quickly as we can get out there, they're going to put a deadline, a timeline on me. But, I mean, and to answer your high school, I mean, some of that might be virtual as well. So, I've seen data being shared virtually as well. I mean, you have to certainly have the space, but again, in a high school, it's just going to look a little bit different. So, I don't know what the timeline is, but I am ready for it. I'm always ready for it.
Let's see. No. I was just going to address a little bit about what do we do with our high schools. It's, as you say, it's a little bit overwhelming. And we've been working with, Ms. Abar and myself have been working with all the schools on their SIP plans, their continuous improvement plans. As we refine those and they firm up their student achievement data, that will also direct what kind of data do they want to focus on? For example, one of the goals is moving twenty to twenty-five percent of your students' A performance level. So, what, how could we do that in a data room setting? And that could be a smaller display of work. They also are building virtual data rooms. I know both Terry Kellen at Mountainside has one, and Kat Hughes at Echo Canyon has the virtual one. So, we're looking at, they're looking at ways to provide trainings as they meet with the principals, here's what your SIP plan says, here's some of the areas that our data is showing, what would be the best way for your site to examine the data, have a place for it, and the best way for the teachers to use it as they meet their PLCs, because we want to link it into the work they're doing in their PLCs at the same time.
So, as a follow-up, again, is there, I get there's a tremendous amount of work, I'm very clear on that. Even at an elementary where it's, you know, twenty-five kids in one classroom, and you're just looking at ELA and math, are we saying as a district that by the end of this school year, we'd like every site to be up and running? Or, is it eighteen months from now? I'm just looking for like a, or is it open-ended even?
No, it's not open-ended. They, the SIP plans are finalized, so fall break, we're making sure everybody's got them in and they're finalized. The expectation for me, supervising middle and high schools, is they have to get it done, certainly before winter break, and my goal would be, they'd be spending the next two or three weeks with support on what does that look like? They need to have something in place long before second semester, so they are ready to go second semester. They'll also be looking at grades, courses, so that will impact at the high school when they can target specific students for that second semester too. But, no, it has to be done this first semester.
The really exciting thing is putting a date on it is fine, but they're excited to look at their data. I mean, the how of it is, we can build it-
Right.
But, it's the how you're using it that we're really focusing on, and that's exciting, because they're getting excited about it.
I heard that loud and clear from the sites that I visited. They are all very excited, but they, like I said, they are all at different places-
Absolutely.
-on the curve of how to go actually do it. You have a Julio versus, you know, and so, I'm just, knowing that they're all like this and making progress, what is, what are they all working towards ultimately?
So, maybe it's time for me to step in on that, because she keeps looking at me when she says dates, and then she looks my way. Our expectation this year is that every school has some type of data, whether it be virtual or a room, that is informing in their instruction. And that said, when the supervisors check in and their mid-year evaluations, which occur between December and January, what they'll be doing is they'll be talking about that use of data, and the principal talking about the teachers' use of data through the system called the PLC that we've put in place to allow for the dialogue to occur. We haven't set an expectation of the level of which you use it, we've just set the expectation of use, so that we allow for the differentiation between the schools to be at a different learning level. A Kristen Kinghorn and a Julio, I have a much higher expectation, because I know they use data, and this is second nature to them. Same thing with Kat Hughes. But, I'm hearing the same kinds of conversations, whether it's Chris Osmerson or Chris, Dr. Thumann. So, high school is a little different issue, and one of the pieces that they've looked for is particularly the diagnostic tools that we need in the secondary to look at the missing foundational skills. So, we've been talking a lot about how are we creating a, how are we using and do we have a consistent diagnostic in particular algebra? Because that's the conversation that allows for the vertical throughout. And so, although we're using one in Coronado, is it the same tool I need to use, and is it giving us the data that we're wanting to look at, so that when we roll this out to Arcadia and some other places, is it a useful tool? So, that then helps the data room in that particular school, it might just be focused in. This year, we're really focused on the data in mathematics, because that's a goal we have. So, the fact that each data room looks different is also based on the SIP, the School Improvement Plan. So, yes, but the expectation is some form exists this year, and they're going to be checking on those mid-year, and then when they sit with me, it's, "Show me those examples." And then, we go out and visit the schools together.
Thank you. And we're so excited. All right, then I'm, oh, go ahead. No, I'll go after you. Board Member Becca?
Well, thank you so much for the focus on this area, which the district has talked about for a long time, and was really excited.
That we have three qualified people working together to get this done, and I love the April date, because that was one of my first questions, when will this all be completed? Although, obviously, a work in progress, right? Because it can always change, because you want feedback, and you've got to analyze it, which comes to one of my questions. Do you have set debriefing? Do you go back after, you know, seeing what you've done and seeing if it actually works, and then have time to?
Absolutely. It's never finished. Every year, we'll revisit it, every year, we, there'll be some tiny adjustments or big adjustments, depending on where standards fall. Absolutely. When we have these meetings, these curriculum meetings, our curriculum specialists send a synopsis out to, depending on who they're working with, as well as myself and their supervisor, going through what they've worked on. And so, we're checking as we go, because it's more than one meeting, it takes several meetings sometimes. But, yes, every year, it'll be an annual thing, we just talked about this today, is putting together those timelines, so that next year, we're ready. I mean, April second will be very soon, but I mean, it should have been done before. It should have been done before. And so, it will be, and we'll continue to check, but they'll be ready for the first day for next year.
Oh, great, and also, oh, I was going to say, one of the other areas that's always been talked about is that a desire for stronger professional development. So, I'm wondering too, if you're going back and after you're doing these trainings, and it sounds like you are, you're asking for their feedback, was, did this meet your expectations? What could we do more next time that we meet?
The curriculum map work that the teachers are doing is also professional development. The time they spend together in those rooms, actually analyzing the standards, putting it together, talking about the resources they have, the dialogue with each other is as strong professional development as you will ever get. And I encourage you, we have a calendar online where we have all of our groups, and it's probably at least three full days a week at Oak every week that we have these meetings going on, because if you remember, we're doing the four cores right now. And so, when you think about science, for example, science has at least thirteen curriculum maps, just in the core areas they have to write. One for each grade level, high school, you're talking about biology and chemistry and physics and all the different areas. Math has as many, language arts, social studies, we're talking about the cores, and that's multiple, multiple maps. And each of those maps is probably going to take five meetings, five, six times maybe, so you think about how busy they are. But, I encourage you to, if you get a chance, we can give you that schedule, and you can stop by whenever you'd like to do that. And that's not touching all the other areas. We had a conversation with Nathan Johnston, our Fine Arts Coordinator, and he has how many different courses?
He's the number sixty-two.
Sixty-two Fine Arts courses that really need curriculum maps. That's not going to happen by April second, so.
It might not. We will try. It might not. We, the feedback we've gotten, I'm sorry, is so positive from the teachers, it's been interesting, because it is different for them to come and sit around the table. But, one of the stories I heard was they were, they were talking as a group, so it's a first-grade teacher from every elementary school, and so, not only are they working on the curriculum apps, but they're also talking about best practices that are happening in their schools. It's really time, it's a half a day several times, where they can talk about that. And in one of our schools, they talked about where they're asked, at Yavapai, they're asked to drill down and look at that data, and other teachers were a little, it was interesting to hear their reaction, they hadn't been at that place yet. So, they're going back to their teams, talking to their principals, and saying, maybe they're on to something. So, it's really opening up a lot of interesting conversations for us. The principals also, I mean, the professional development, we've just started, and I can't speak to what happened before, but I mean, they're so grateful for the time together, even today. The feedback was, "Thank you so much for letting us collaborate and learn more about professional." We go to conferences, and we've upped that game as well, but for them to talk about it within themselves, what are you doing on your campus and vice versa, it really has helped them as well.
Well, I want to say, Dr. Nance, thank you for bringing up that it isn't just ELA and math, because what happens out in the general public because of our Arizona merits focusing in on that, when we went out and did the forums, and you spoke about those two areas, I got feedback, when do we ever concentrate on the other subjects? And I think you just brought that up. So, I hope that word gets out, that the curriculum mapping isn't just for the two areas.
We absolutely are. The maps right now are the four core areas we're concentrating on. The benchmarks, unfortunately, right now are just still in ELA and math. We have a lot of work to do with the science and social studies benchmarks, but until we have the maps in much better shape, you just can't do it.
Well, I had one more question, but I'm going to just say, I will talk to you privately about it, because I'm just interested in that Suoro program, to find out if it's a pilot program. I think the parents will be excited to hear that there's some program in which their kids are just not being promoted, because when they're not proficient. And I'm just kind of interested to know how that piece works with the summer, and who pays for that? Because maybe that is paid by, for the district, because then we're going to have to provide resources for that. So, just going to be talking about that at a different time, just not right now.
Board Member Kirby?
Julio, you can't answer that. So, where, so you talked about the Core Four, and then we talked about all the, how does writing, because writing, well, maybe, does writing have a curriculum map to it?
So, it's part of the standards across the board.
It's everything.
So, it gets-
Writing happens everywhere.
Everywhere.
And so, it's according to the state standards, it's part of, it's everything, every subject, including fine arts, including the cores, including mathematics. So, yes, absolutely. So, if we look at our standards, that's part of it. So, teachers actually physically touching the standards is huge. Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Well, and one of the points too that goes with that is, one of the reasons why you mapped a curriculum is to expose gaps. And so, it's oftentimes easy to say, "Well, we don't write here because it's math," and you forget that that actually is a part of your standards. But, by going through this process, we can remind ourselves, and we can, in those moments where you're led by an instructional leader, build the skills that are necessary to support it in all the places where it's supposed to be.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So, we have principals from different levels, high school, middle, and elementary, meeting together, so it's not just high school and high school, and that's good too, or middle school, middle school. So, I'm just glad to hear this, because I can recall not too long ago, speaking with the principal about, "Well, aren't you meeting with your colleagues at a different level?" And they're like, "No." So, if I'm mistaken to anybody listening, I apologize, but that's what I recall hearing. And then, I also recall sitting a few years ago in Mountainside Middle School at a presentation about what was going on. I think it may have been the middle school brain presentation, and it was talking about some of the classes and curriculum happening at Mountainside. And I remember there was a buzz in the audience of, "Well, they're not doing that at my middle school," or "They're not doing that at, you know, my school." So, I'm really glad or pleased to hear that there's this discussion going on about what's going on at our schools at all different levels, so that our principals at the different levels can speak to each other. Hopefully, there's some more vertical integration going on, so when our students move on, they know what's occurring.
So, can I jump in?
Yes, go right ahead.
So, on November twenty-second, when we have our PD Day, we, they will be working together with like teams to have that vertical articulation.
Right.
And so, we're structuring that the morning of that day, that they are working together. I mean, that's just one example, where we're overseeing that, we're helping them with that, so absolutely.
I'm just glad to hear that the principals at the different, who may be, you know, middle school principals or meeting with other middle school principals and elementary, to hear what's going on at their schools. Because I think we have some, in addition to just the programs, we have some great leaders at our sites that can learn from one another. You know, it's great to bring in people for PD, but we also have great practices going on our schools in which we can all learn from one another, so thank you.
Although, I'm not going to, but, okay, this is one of my favorite topics, but not, and mostly comes from the fact that in years past, and in a past life as a board member, it was a very frustrating topic, and so, I got a lot of questions built up, so I kind of, forgive me, please. And so I got a lot of questions built up, so I kind of, forgive me please. It has always been difficult, I think, for our community to understand how you have, you know, your three levels of students, if you want to divide them up that way, that below grade level, that at grade level, at grade level, and above grade level. And how our teachers and our educators deal with that, deal with that reality in their classroom, especially if those ranges are significant or wide. And I think certainly in our community, we have that, and in certain different places, we have it more than others, but it's there. So I very much appreciate these conversations. They do make a lot more sense to me. And I've gotten a lot more confidence that we are really addressing this issue in those three levels, because our goal is to make sure that everyone reaches their full potential, no matter where they are at on that scale. So very grateful for these conversations happening and looking very different than they have in the past. So thank you for that. How has it been carved out, that PD time, that PLC time? How has that really been carved out? Are subs used for some teachers meeting during class time?
Both, to be real honest. The curriculum map work that we are doing, we do put substitutes in classrooms. We're only bringing teachers out of the classroom for the most part, for half-days at a time. And so for example, we will bring a third grade teacher from every school together in the morning, and then a fourth grade teacher from every school together in the afternoon, and the one sub can cover both of those situations in the day. Same thing with biology and chemistry, maybe on the same day, so you've got the substitute can cover a biology teacher in the morning, a chemistry teacher in the afternoon. And I think we also believe that a half a day is enough at one time to do this work. It's very intensive work. So, you know, once in a while you'll see a full day, but for the most part, half-day. So for that, yes, we are providing subs in the classroom. You asked about the PLC time. That's an individual school issue as to when they schedule their professional learning communities and those activities. And so principals have asked for suggestions, we've given suggestions, but that is really something that's based on their schedules, what happens at the school, and how they've been able to make that happen.
And is there currently kind of being added structure to those PLCs? I won't say forms, I'm not sure what to use, but kind of checklist or guidance that's there to follow along in those conversations?
I'm going to let my experts up here, both Chris and Michael have done some extensive work with PLCs, working with principals, and they will continue to do so. And so I'll let them answer that question.
And before they do, I just, we at one point here did have those expectations, and it was very, it wasn't, it was consistent, but it didn't give autonomy. So we need to make sure, because it looks different on every campus. So we want to make sure that it looks, it works the best way it can. Go ahead.
No, I'm just going to add to this, that Advanced Ed and its accreditation of our secondaries, one of the areas that they got dinged for was because they had no minutes of the meetings. And it was, without evidence at the secondary level, you will not get credit for this type of professional conversations. So they have to have minutes in the secondary for the next advanced accreditation as one of the improvement pieces they have to do. So all five high schools got dinged on that.
And I will turn, I was just at Tonali the other day, and Mr. Prudinsky has his form and he has his notebooks, and they fill that out, and they have minutes of their meetings, and they have agendas, and so that, he has that information as well to be able to have conversations about where their focus is moving forward.
Right. And so for our teachers to understand why that change has happened in their PLCs, I mean.
I really believe the principals understand, and therefore the teachers are understanding. It's not, just not a mandate, there's a reason for it.
Yeah. And I'm going to give an example. I'm just going to say, over at Soworo, last year, she addressed it specifically and tied it to the advanced accreditation. We have new principals that are reviewing those new reports, but that was a critical finding at each school. So they've, I know at the secondary, they've been sharing that with their staff.
Thank you.
And to go hand in hand with that, on one hand, you need to have structure and you need to have these sorts of things, but you also need to have the training so you understand why you're doing it, and you're not doing it just to feed the paperwork.
Right.
And that's where our training is working really hard, to make certain that the building leaders and the teachers in particular understand, this is something that you do together for the betterment of your students, not for filling out papers or not for meeting other people's obligations. So we're always trying to strike that balance of, there is accountability, because that's the way the world works, and it's important. But we're not neglecting the other part, which is, you need to understand why we do this, what the distinct advantages are, and also, let's track and see what your results are. Let's not wait until some distant moment down the road.
Connecting it directly to instruction and driving instruction.
And that is the key. And so when Advanced Ed, what they were looking for was that student-centered focused conversation with teachers. And so when they were looking for the minutes, they were looking for, are you meeting and talking about, what are you doing to meet the needs of students? What are you doing when it's not working? And are you looking at that data? And that, they had no information to share with Advanced Ed. And so that was a really critical piece. So it is that balance of, it's not just paperwork for paperwork. They're looking for, what are you doing in those meetings that are student-focused?
Right.
I know this, this morning at the principals' meeting, Chris and Michael did a little short presentation for principals. And I know, Michael, one of the things you try to get across to principals, that a PLC is not an event. Can you address that quickly?
Yeah.
It's a verb.
Professional, yeah, professional learning community is not a verb. It's not a book study, it's not a meeting. It's a way of doing business. It's a way of fixing your practice, so that you're trying to meet the betterment of all students. And when we say all, we mean all students. And you can't do that unless you have effective conversations about where the students are succeeding and where they're struggling. That question of how much paperwork has come up a lot this year, as we've talked with principals. And the answer I always give them is enough to track the data, because that's got to be the most important reason that you're meeting. Not because your mandate is to meet, not because you have to produce a document that you may or may not use. When we talk about using student data and data walls, they're pretty things that hang there unless you're having real effective conversations about how students are succeeding and where they're struggling, and what are you going to do for the kids who don't have it, and what are you going to do for the kids who already have it? So it's a self-correcting issue, is that if they're doing the right things for kids, and if they're moving their data on their public data walls, then you know they're having the right conversations and doing the right things.
Right. That's very meaningful implementation of PLCs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of newer for our district. Yes, did you untad?
Yeah, this is last comment. But this is such phenomenal work. And what, as I listen more and more, what I'm hearing just by this last conversation is, this really is a cultural shift. This is like the heavy lifting stuff in an organization. And what I do know about cultural shift and ability to really continue to make it meaningful is if you can attach it to values and show ways to identify reward and recognize, I mean, this speaks so clearly to growth mindset as well as student-focused. And so I'm just wondering if maybe there's some examples or, you know, some value-based recognition of just really outstanding above and beyond performance? And it just seems to me that this area is oozing with probably a couple of candidates that maybe we could start to recognize, that type of cultural shift and value-based shift.
It's so amazing that you say that. It is shifting to the data-driven culture, and it is about student, being student growth and being, student-focused and growth-minded. And certainly, some of the celebrations that we're doing with the outstanding educators is going to reflect teachers who are using the data. In the same hand, another recognition is when your peers come to your school and get to sit in your data room, and you get to lead the conversation, there is a huge recognition with that as well. And that's what we've begun, the, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Ibarra are taking principal groups to campuses where there are great examples to, and that for a principal is a very rewarding moment. And for a principal who was brand-new to our district, to be the first visit was a huge recognition of, he came in and immediately went there. So Yabapai is the first of many visits that will occur. Last year, we did a lot with Kristen Kinghorn, who was doing amazing work up at Desert Canyon Elementary School.
As far as recognizing, two different sites are doing different things to recognize their teams. But the bottom line is, a hundred percent of the teachers and administrators in the district are here to do better for kids. That's it. And so the result really comes, and the reward really comes, when the students who struggle are struggling less, and they're more engaged in class and they're learning more. That's where it comes. I mean, you can hand out Starbucks cards or whatever, some people do, but it's the results in the classroom. That's the reward.
Another part is, talking about cultural shift, is the transparency of data. So in my previous schools, where we had that transparent data, and even before that, we identified students when they went through the lunch line by where they were in Ames. I mean, we really did. We knew that data, we had those conversations with students. So that, and we're seeing more and more of that happening, that transparent data. My data was up in my office. It was, the minute it dropped here in June in the summer, I was, in the old days, writing it down. And it was, it was on my boards, and some of you had visited my campus. And teachers, that was it. They knew it was going to be up there. It wasn't a blame game. It was, what are you doing? Why does it look so different in your class? And we moved forward. And so we're seeing more and more, it's okay, the cultural shift there, I think, is a huge celebration. So as we visit more schools, I think we'll see more and more of that.
Yeah. I agree, and I'm not done, sorry. I told you it's a big topic for me. And I totally recognize the culture shift. Some of us are familiar with it in the past, and some, it's brand-new. And we recognize that. So I appreciate that being acknowledged today, that, yeah, we've got our campuses at all different levels, board recognizes that, it's just, it's work in progress, and that's okay.
So you drew a pretty good picture, I think, for us at the elementary school level as far as those classrooms, what can happen, you know, with those different levels of learners. Something that I'm familiar with is the idea of like flexible groupings. Where actually grades, teachers, you know, one grade swap students, depending on what they need. Is that part of this training as well in our district? Is that something that's kind of embraced, or is it?
We've talked a lot about making, we've talked, we've talked a lot about making a shift from me, my kids, my classroom, to we as a grade level, as a school, as a district. So that, yeah, it's no longer her students and his students and my students, it's all of our students. And so if I can take the high group, Yabapai, again, is a good example, one teacher will take the higher kids and work with them in a much bigger group, because they're going to need much less support, which frees up two other teachers than to work with some aides with very, very small groups of kids on very, very specific deficiencies that they have and filling those gaps.
Yeah. I've seen that work very well, I'm not sure what else. That is exciting. And I can understand too, where it's maybe not necessary in every place, at every grade, at every, with the conscious need. So moving on then, elementary school, because I think it's become incredibly clear to us all that every time we talk about interventions, we started high school, and that's probably the wrong place to be started, because we've got to get to the general elementary school. So I hesitate as I discuss with the severe gaps of some of our students, and some, whether they're coming in to our district, or they've been in our district and they just fell through the cracks. And if that fifth grader has left fifth grade, gone on to middle school with such, you know, the first grade reading level, or the math skills, that, I mean, math facts, not even present. We know that child then keeps going on, going on, and then by ninth grade, we're saying, let's do algebra. And we just know that's not possible. So I've always struggled to understand, how can not set our teachers up for failure? How we can not setting that student up for failure, year after year after year? What do we do with those severe gaps that just need an intervention well beyond your day-to-day?
That's tier three. That's the top of the pyramid, and that's really beyond what we're talking about here. That's when you get into the individual assistance. It may become a special education issue. It may be some other form of intensive intervention, one-on-one or one-on-two or something like that. We have, we have special.
Putting aside the special.
Okay.
Totally setting that aside, and, I mean, just literally turn out students who've for years, who've just been able to fail through.
But that's, but that's the problem.
And that's the problem.
That's the problem. The interventions weren't done along the road, that's the problem.
And when we're now in our day-to-day, and we have that situation, you know, what are middle school teachers and high school teachers able to do? And what does that, that tier one look like? Again, not so much like that.
So we're going to jump in on that, and we're going to tag-team here, so I'm going to let Dr. Johnson go first, then I'm going to tag-tease a piece to that.
Your battery ran out. I really did. I'm out.
This is where at secondary, we're looking at targeted interventions. So not just what algebra skills they're missing, but what are the requisite skills, those prerequisite skills they're missing? And then what do we do for that targeted intervention? And I just saw that and shared when I was doing a site visit and a walkthrough, and the kids could do amazing work with the formula, with the letters, but then when numbers got plugged in and there were some issues with fractions, they couldn't remember the pieces of the fractions, for example. Well, the teacher can't just stop and say, okay, now we're going to relearn all our fractions again. But that's a targeted intervention, so the students that need that work need to have either a pull-out, or we have tutoring, we have a specific methodology system that brings those kids in, that are there without having some of those basic skills, and work on those because they're not going to be successful. For example, AZ Merit, they may know those formulas frontwards and backwards, and a consensual understanding of how it all works. But the problem is, they'll make a math addition mistake, or a division mistake, or a multiplication. And so those pieces have to be solid, but we have what we have. We have the students now, we can't send them back. So we need to identify those through PLCs, for example. Then those are targeted interventions that we put in place with teachers doing specific work with those students on those requisite skills.
I'm going to tag-team here. It looks different on each campus. And the other interesting piece is, principals are also doing the walkthroughs, and it's fascinating for a principal to go into a school and say, wow, I thought that was an honors class, to find out it was a regular class, but the level was so much higher than what he's seen in his school, to be able to understand that there's been an expectation issue as well. So based on the school that you're in, and expectations had been set low, instead of raising expectations and filling those targeted interventions, what's happened is we've lowered our overall academic rigor across the board. So that's one piece of it. So that's happening, that all-ha's occurring. The other piece is, you, I don't know if you ever heard Alan Blankenship speak, but he says, failure isn't an option. So when a high school student says, I'm just not going to do it, and they do, quite often, we have to, we have to be able to have a one-on-one. If I can't as a teacher motivate you to go ahead and move forward, I need to get you some assistance. And that too is an intervention. That means, that student needs to go down to the office, and counselors need to sit down with that student and figure out what the issue is. Is this an academic roadblock? Is this, I've given up? Is this, you know, I just got to tell you, I've tried this, I've been in this class, this is my third time in algebra, and I am just done. And if that's the case, we then have to look at a completely different type of intervention. But to allow a student to sit there and say, I'm just not going to do it, and not send them for further help of, I can't convince you that you need to do this, because in my room, failure is not an option. So we have to give teachers the pathway of, when that student does that, what are the options I take as a teacher? So these are the big conversations that are occurring in our high schools, because they do have students coming in with such severe gaps, that normally we would see them in that top tier. But the reality is, they're not top-tier kids, they're years and years of gaps that have just caught up with them. Now, it's what we're doing at the Coronado Complex with the targeted intervention, with the pull-out grouping, with, yes, sometimes a repeat course, but with a different methodology of instruction so we can fill the gaps. And so you can't just, I can't tell you to go back into algebra three years in a row and have the exact same. And so you can't just, I can't tell you to go back into algebra three years in a row and have the exact same teacher with the same methodology and expect a different outcome. So all of this is, in here, not so uncommon to other, other high schools, but seems to be a bit more rampant here. We, as we, if we lower our expectations for students, if we label courses honors, but don't teach them as honors, we've lowered the academic rigor and we have to address that issue. So data is just the beginning of that shift because what data will do is expose the man behind the curtain. It exposes the real gorilla in the room. It, it says, oh, well, did we even teach that? And, and then the conversations begin to have. And then it's, well, do they have the preparatory schools? And if they don't have the preparatory, that horizontal conversation now becomes critical. So it will be a growing dialogue that will begin to, to, and teachers will begin to talk to each other about, and I listened to this at Coronado when I visited their professional development day on, on a Saturday. Math, I sat with a group of math teachers who were talking to each other about, well, what are you doing when the kids don't know how to do that skill? And they were talking about a skill that was a fifth grade skill. And the, the teacher said, I, I first need to know, do they understand the concept? Is it a skill issue? And when it's a skill issue, guess what I did? I had to reteach it because the whole class didn't get it. It wasn't even an issue of five kids didn't get it. The entire class was struggling. So this math teacher said, what I do is I take a portion of my class and I'm teaching skills that they need to have to do the algebra so that I can move forward with this curriculum, why I'm filling in the gaps of this curriculum. And that teacher is, was working twice as hard and, but they were sharing it with each other. Well, what did you do to teach that? What was the material you used? The conversation went to, what are you doing? And that was a powerful, it was watching a mini PLC during a professional development training where they were in departments. And it's fabulous to watch. But there, that's the dialogue that's coming out of it.
And that's also where the mapping process is so important so that we're not generating gaps by creating these artificially lowered bars.
Yes, yes.
But we can have representatives from high, five high schools sitting at the same table, led by an instructional leader, our expert in the field who can also provide PD on the spot to go ahead and say, this is what our standard is. And we're going to hold ourselves accountable to what the state standards are, standards plus.
Exactly. And, and I thank you all for acknowledging that. I mean, that is our reality right now in SUSD. It, it's just is. It's a huge hurdle. It's, obviously is a major work in progress, that a lot more work ahead. And I do just want our educators to know that, that we recognize it. It, it's not just telling you, you've got to raise the bar, you've got to raise the bar. It's, there is so much underneath this and what we ourselves in SUSD have built that, that we need to fix and correct and make stronger. I am incredibly grateful for this dialogue, very myself. And I really look forward to us learning more about how this keeps growing.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Anybody else?
Just want to thank the team. Great work.
Thanks.
April 1st.
All right. Next information discussion item, 3D. Oh, just as exciting. Auditor General report, follow-up on transportation and cost.
Well, while we, we close out one and open up the other, let, let me just say this to, to Scottsdale people who have logged on tonight because they're so interested in, in this particular report. Before I came, this is not one of my hires. The Scottsdale School District hired Jeff Cook, who is, in my opinion, probably the very best transportation person in the state of Arizona and is highly respected in our state. Yeah, green card, no red cards tonight. I, I have to tell you, I was, I was so pleased when I arrived here and saw who was here to handle transportation to begin to address this issue. You had a significant issue in transportation. The audit was clear about that. There are, there are definitely issues, but if, if there are fixes to be found and to move us in the right direction, we have the right person in charge of the department. So again, I just want to thank Mr. Cook for his work, but I, I'm just going to tell you, we have the very best person in the seat to run that bus. And sometimes he drives a bus. He still drives a bus. I couldn't believe it. We were trying to call him the other day. He was driving a bus.
That's what he was, he was saying today that he had to keep his shirt clean because his bus wouldn't start. Come on, tell him the story. You might as well.
Oh, I got to Desert Canyon Middle School and, and shut it off because I got there a few minutes early and waiting for the kids to come out. And about the time they come out, I fired it up, kind of cool it down a little bit for the kids and it wouldn't start. So got back in the injic apartment and after fiddling around a little bit and unhooked some things and hooked some other things back up, got it going and we went on our way.
Yep. And he still cleaned up to the board.
Yeah, I don't think I got any grease on it.
That's the kind of guy Jeff is. He does one end to the other. So I'll start out here just a little bit in the beginning. This was the final issue that the auditor general did when they did the performance audit that they issued in, in 15. You have 24 months. They come back every six months to follow up. So we're just focusing on the transportation piece of it. And so you can see that all three of the findings for transportation have been implemented. And Jeff did that, so he's, he's really done a great job and it shows up here. So, uh, one of the things that we talked about at a prior meeting, these are non-MNO transportation costs that we pay from other funds. And the thing, these are grants up here. This is actually MIPS money, Medicaid money. I don't know why they spent $401,000. Maybe they bought buses. I'm not sure. I didn't look. But these dollars down here are the dollars that are causing the cost per mile to go up because the auditor general doesn't isolate MNO costs. They include all transportation costs when they do their calculations. So that's a decision that, that the district has. These are overseas trips, trips out of state, which get coded to, uh, school, student transportation, even though we're, we're not making you drive overseas. You probably would though, huh? So, uh, this is just the last summary piece and then Jeff will take over. What I did is I took the last four years, five years, whatever this is. Sometimes I get in trouble because I can't count basic numbers. And you can see this is the transportation salaries over the years. And this is what we budgeted for this year. Uh, the benefits, purchase service is what we pay someone else to do. Jeff can't repair every transmission we have that goes out. So we actually have to service it out. And, um, why these are credits is probably back in those days, I really didn't have time to look at this today, is they would take field trip funds and offset purchase service in some other districts. And that could very well be what this is here. I normally would have done it to supplies, which is your fuels and your tire. But look how these, these costs have, have come down on that piece. So overall, this is the total cost. Then what I did up here is I took the transportation reports. This is how many miles, this VI total mileage is vehicle inventory. So that's how many miles our buses were putting on the odometers. The number of eligible riders is, is here. And obviously as your enrollment goes down, your eligible riders are going to go down. This is how many miles they were driving a day. So he's gone from 11,000 miles and, and he's gotten it down to 9,000 miles. So, um, and then obviously the number of school days. This comes up with your, what I'm calling your school year route mileage, which is home to school. That's the money the state pays us to operate. And so it comes down to cost per mile for just running all the buses, whether the kids are on it or not. Then the, the daily miles per rider, obviously as a, as a student is on the bus longer, they're going to go further. You know, they're not as short a route. So this is the annual cost per rider. So in 17, it, it came down. This is the cost per route mile. So that's going to be like your home to school. And you can see that it varies a lot. There's, there's a lot of factors that get into this, but he, he's pretty much stuck. It, it's going to be difficult to, to do much additional savings unless the new Trans Finder system, or what is, is it, Trans Finder does your routes? Yeah. And so, but the auditor general counts all funds. So, and it seems like I should be able to match their numbers, but I can't because they pull that audit file and it isn't always clear which ones they're using. But the difference here, as you can see, the cost per, you know, it, it just varies. And because up here, I'm using just MNO and down here, they're using all the funds. So as the district decides that students should be using tax credit money and everything else that they can do, and they use the school as a vehicle to do that travel, it affects our operating costs. As far as auditor general goes in getting dollars in the classroom, which is obviously the goal. There you go.
Okay. Where are you pushing this one?
Hit it, home run. Just, uh, hit the-
The mouse? Oh, here.
I do that. But you do it however you want. Yeah, just one, yeah.
Okay. This, uh, I ran some, some numbers over the past five years, including this year. And I want you to see because when I first started here, Mr. O'Brien told me that we were under an audit, a state audit, and we had some issues to resolve and one of them was efficiencies. And how do we, how do we tackle that thing? So the, the first and biggest thing that we can do is, is look at employee costs because that's usually about 80, 80% of my budget. So we tried to consolidate because a lot of our buses were running not very full. So I tasked a couple of ladies and I give them all the credit because I've got two routers and I'll, Kim Billdilly and Diane Watson, who does the special needs. Kim does the regular ed. And I tasked them, I said, we've got to clean this up and we've got to reduce routes. And part of it was self-preservation too because we can't find drivers. So we reduced the routes. We were able to stay afloat and that's how we've been able to do it so far. So you can see from, from the 2013, 14 school year, we ran 144 routes. And that would be the, uh, the numbers of drivers that were going out daily on assignments, on the same assignment each day, going to Desert Mountain High School and Anasazi Elementary, or whatever the case was. So it's broken down between the regular education and the special education routes. And you can see now this year, um, we've dropped it all the way down to 112 routes that are going out each day versus what it was, um, uh, five years ago at 144. So that's, that's that many less drivers. That's 32 less drivers that are coming in every day for, for an assignment. So, yes.
Clarification question. So you're saying there, that those numbers are drivers, but didn't, don't we have-
Takes a driver to run a route and they may, they may have multiple schools that they're serving?
That's not my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I thought, and this is my question, it's a clarification, that we would send a driver out in the morning and then for, I don't know if it was, I guess it's high schools, I think, their first, right?
Usually, yes.
And then, and then once those routes, then that same driver would go do the elementary routes.
Correct.
So is, is that number of routes or is it drivers?
That's the number of routes, but there's a driver associated with every one of those routes.
Okay. But it's the number of routes.
But it's, yeah, so it's, it's, and I'm counting a route. It's the AM and PM. So they, they have, I'm going to use the same example, Desert Mountain, Anasazi. They have them in the AM, they have them in the PM. That's one route. And, and one driver that's driving that route.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, so you can see we've had, we've had quite a bit of, of reduction in the number of buses that head out and drivers that head out every day. That's where we've been able to come up with the majority of the savings. Okay, some, some basic breakdowns and this is just in this past year. From September of last year to September of this year, we had 142 bus drivers at this point last year. We have 117 right now. We had 26 bus aides. We have 21 right now. And that's why Jeff Cook is driving some days. Okay? We have 11 mechanics. We have 10 right now. We would love to fill that position, but at this point, we haven't received qualified people to apply for it. So hopefully that will get filled at some point. The office staff has remained the same. At 11, we have two different locations. We have a, a south lot, Apache is called, and then our one up north. The buses have stayed the same. We have 80 special needs buses. We have 107 regular ed buses. And then the white fleet has basically stayed the same, although I could take this one down because somebody crashed one of our white activity buses and it's been totaled. So I should probably change that to 165. Okay, um, yes.
I'm sorry. Could you explain what are the white fleet? What are the-
White, white fleet would be everything that's non-school bus. So it could be, you've seen some of those white activity buses at the high schools. Like that could be, um, some of the, um, facilities, grounds people, you know, pickup trucks, sedans, different things that are used.
It's not just eight? Okay.
It's, it's, it's basically all the, all the moving vehicles in the district.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
All right. So some more information I was asked to provide, you know, what, who are we busing? You know, what are the programs? So we have some that are district required and some that are federal, state and district required. So our, our regular education to and from, you know, that's, that's coming. We're, we're doing it, but we're not really required to do that. Right? I mean, special ed, yes. But regular education, I, almost every, at least unified school district does. It's, it's something I think that separates us from the charter schools, but it's not a requirement. It's a district requirement. Special education is, is mandated federally, state, and of course, we're doing it at the district level. We, we transport all the high school sports. You know, that's a district requirement. Um, I guess you could maybe call that a state requirement because of NIA contract, but, um, anyway, it's, the district is choosing to do it. Out of district, special education students, we, we transport a number of those for specialized programs in schools that maybe we don't, um, meet their particular needs. Preschool students is another one. sped job training. We do some where we're picking them up to high schools, taking them out into the community and dropping them off in different areas where they can do some job training. Middle school sports is a district one. McKinny Vento is one that hits all school districts really hard. And it's, to me, it's a very frustrating thing that we have to do. I understand it, but it's very costly and we can have, we get a, we get a request tomorrow for a McKinney Vento student and it's still, for the life of me, I cannot understand how it's in the child's best interest to ride a bus from here out to Apache Junction in rush hour traffic and spending an hour and a half on that bus. And they tell me it's in the best interest of the child. I disagree, but that's my own personal feelings. So that takes a driver right there, you know? And we've, we've lost them to be able to do maybe a high school run, a, a middle school run or whatever. So it's, that's my own personal frustrations. Okay? We handle field trips at both the high school, the middle school, elementary level. We now have a new mandate that's just getting started now with foster care students. That very similar to McKinney Vento that we're going to be dealing with. We transport the band, the choir, the cheer, IB program, gifted math, science, culinary arts and even, these are all different programs that were, were taking care of the kids, getting them to and from school and, and special programs. After school tutoring buses. At some of the elementary schools, we go there, they get grant money and, and they schedule buses and we, we're running them. And then we finish up with, um, open enrollment. We have students coming in from outside of our district and we also have students within our district who maybe live in one school service area and they're jumping on or getting to one of the buses that exists for going to another school and, and we're transporting those kids too. So that's kind of the, there's probably some other ones in there that I've missed, but those are the basic ones that are the different programs that we're supporting. Okay, so what else can we do to become more proficient or efficient? Okay, we've pretty much done all we reasonably can to, to get the cost down, to, to be as lean and mean a machine as we can be. So there is one other thing that I told Mr. O'Brien. I was here for about one week and I said, well, I can tell you right now what we need to do. And that's bell times. It's, this is-
Where's the element?
We, we have, we have a 60-minute window of time. Our, our high schools and, and our, um, most of our middle schools, I think, most of the middle schools, start at 7:45 in the morning. And then all of our elementaries and our K-8 schools start, or some of the K-8 schools, there's a, a mix, start at 8:45. So we've got 60 minutes to get those kids into school. And then in the afternoon, we've got the same thing. We actually have 55 minutes because we have the itch, issue at the high school with the instructional time. So we, we lost five minutes and, and so now some of those schools were pulling in their five minutes late. Sorry. It's the best we can do. So the, the only other thing that we can really do that's going to get any kind of major impact as far as, as more reductions and putting some more dollars back into the classroom is, is adjusting bell times. And I've worked in, I worked in the state of Washington and I've been in, in three other school districts down here. And this is the only one where I've seen this kind of a setup at a unified school district. I'm just being very blunt. It's, it's a real inefficient waste of transportation resources because we're not getting the best bang for our buck. Okay, so I told you about the 60-minute window. If we're really going to- If we're really going to make some changes, and again, I'm not promoting this, I'm just giving you this as, as something you can think about, is, we need, we need a ninety to a hundred, either nine, an hour and a half to an hour and forty-five minutes window of time to get kids into school, and then to get them home in the afternoon. So that, yes?
Should I wait and ask my question?
Oh, you can ask now, it's fine.
Okay.
So when you say a sixty-minute window to transport students, do, does that mean a student is on the bus for sixty minutes? Like, if I happen to be the last bus stop, I've been sitting on the bus for sixty minutes?
Okay, we, in, in district, we try and keep them sixty minutes or less on a bus, okay? The, some of the out-of-district ones, I, I gave you an example of McKinney Vento, we can't, we, we can't do anything with that. But we try and, and most of them honestly are on their fifteen to thirty minutes, it's pretty, pretty normal. But I'm gonna tell you, with the no good deed goes unpunished, with the cuts that we have made, you know, there's some people that aren't happy about it, because they're, they're used to their child getting home twenty minutes after school, and maybe it's forty minutes now. So that's, that's some of the things that we've had to deal with, and hopefully, you're not hearing a lot of those. I try to deal with those in my office, but, but it does, it increases the, the length of the bus ride for some of those kids. Okay, so to, to really provide those efficiencies, we need a, a wider window of time. Ninety-minute window, I, I've done some calculations, I believe we could provide eight to ten FTE drivers, and, and they're all six hours, so that's, it would be a point seven five FTE. If we had a hundred and five-minute window of time, I think that would go to twelve to fifteen more reduction. So, again, I'm not promoting one thing over the other, I'm just giving you some information. This is one way that we can, we can make the department a little more efficient and throw some more money back into the classroom, yes?
Board Member Kirby?
So from your experience in other districts, what is, on average, the window? Other K, unified?
A minimum of ninety, a minimum of an hour and a half, yeah. And I'm gonna show you some times here, so you can see those, and, and it might, it might open up, yes?
Board Member Harley?
Can I just have a basic question? So how does more time reduce staff, what's happening, logistics?
Well, what happens, okay, so most of our drivers now, they come in and they serve two schools. Okay, when I bring up this time thing, I think it'll, it'll make it more plain, you can see it on paper. But just by having more time to work in, we can schedule where we have a tier here, maybe it's high schools. We can then serve a middle school, and then we can also serve an elementary school. Okay, it gives you more time to transport more than just two schools. Some of our drivers only have one, just because it's a longer run, and there's not time to tie it into the next one, because the time that, that one-hour gap is not long enough, okay? Okay, so here are some possible bell time schedules that I put together. The first one is, is the hundred to a hundred and five minute, and there's a five-minute difference in the second one. You can see where, instead of starting at seven thirty, it starts at seven thirty-five. It's keeping the same timeframe that they have now, the same time that they're at school. But seven thirty to two oh five is an example, you know, that possibly for high schools. Middle schools, eight fifteen to two fifty, the K-eight schools, eight forty-five to three fifteen, and the K-six, nine fifteen to three forty-five. That last one, they would be, they would be, they would be thirty minutes later than they're currently going right now. The second one is, is just a little bit different, it's starting at seven thirty-five. And then the other ones are losing, losing five minutes between that first and second tier. And then the ninety-minute schedule, with the numbers of, the numbers of buses that go to high schools right now, the numbers to middle school, K-eight and K-six, I could not say that, okay, if we went to that, I'm not gonna be able to put all high schools in one, all middle schools another. There's gonna be a mixture of, of how we would mix and match that, which we have right now to a certain extent. So those are, again, are just some, some possibilities. Again, the top one, I, I anticipate we, we could save twelve to fifteen positions, the bottom one, eight to ten. Questions on this part? Does that answer your question a little bit of how we could get more? We just, it gives us more time where we run, we run shorter routes, we, we try and, we, I, I would flood the first, first one, make the routes a little bit shorter, I say flood, I'd add a few buses at some of the schools. And then it gives us enough time where we can get to the second school and do a third. So some drivers, under that scenario, would serve four schools. Where currently, right now, the most they do is two, and some of them only do one. That's how we're going to get, we're gonna get the, the savings. Because now, if, if you got, figure you got eight runs going into it, and right now, you've got, you've got four drivers doing that, because they all have two schools, I could basically cut that in half. Instead of eight drivers, or four drivers, I could cut it down to two.
And just roughly, so ten people would be, I don't know what, like three and a half thousand?
No, if, if you're thinking like they'd be riffed or something?
No, 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 I just mean, what's the cost about, what, what are we talking about?
Well, what, did you calculate, I, I kinda did, I, I think it's around twenty-five thousand, I think, with, with, with benefits, would, would be a fairly, so...
But, because right now, we have a shortage as well.
Yeah. So I, I think you're looking at somewhere between, between three and four hundred thousand, if, if we did the twelve to fifteen. The eight to ten obviously is gonna be less, it's gonna be more like two hundred thousand. Now, I've been around long enough, too, that I know bell times, you guys, I'm sure you went through it, like, with just with the high school thing, just the five-minute thing. It's a very emotional thing, so again, I'm not promoting one way or another, I just want you to know this is here, that it, it is an opportunity. Is, is it worth it for that amount of money? I don't know, that's something that you guys would have to decide. But I just want you to know that, as far as what we've done, I don't, I don't see that we can really cut significantly anymore to make any more real savings, other than if we went to doing this.
Board Member Harman?
So I'm gonna assume that you've done everything possible, so I'm not even gonna question that. But I did hear the most interesting thing just this last week, that UPS, right? Best practice, exactly, no prac, best practices in logistics does no right turns.
Right, yes.
No left turn, no left turns, only right, only right turns.
Yes.
Do we do that, just wondering?
No, no.
Or do you need like a thousand buses, before you ever can consider doing that?
No, we don't, and please don't promote that. My, my, my staff thought I was bad with cracking the whip, you know, we will cut buses. Oh, no, anyway, but yes, I...
Buses turn left in front.
Yeah, and they claim it's more efficient, and so, maybe? Was there another question?
Board Member Crabbitt, question?
I'm sorry. How, how full are our high school buses? I know we use the big buses, but I know when I drive by the Chaparral Motor Speedway in the morning, that the parking lot is full of student vehicles, and yes, even though, you know, we still have to pick up the child who's in way north Scottsdale, you know, even though, just 'cause, you know, they, they, there may not be that many people from that area, but is there an opportunity to shrink the size of the buses and that we send to some of, on some of our routes for, for our high schools? And would that represent a cost saving?
You just set up the next part of my, that was perfect.
I didn't know, I really didn't know.
'Cause you didn't really think I was gonna get up here and only talk about cuts. Remember, we passed a bond for some new buses, I wanna talk about that a little bit. Okay, so I, I will answer that here in just like really quickly. Okay, our fleet is getting older, okay? So the cost to maintain it is gonna continue to go up, so I just want you to be aware of that. We have buses right now that serve our, our probably most, not probably, they are our most fragile group, students that are in wheelchairs in our special needs programs. And I would love to be able to start replacing some of those buses, that we had six million dollars from the bond that was set aside, and, and I would like to start moving on, replacing some of these. So you can see right here, these are the, the age of these buses, and they've got a lot of miles on them, and they don't run as smoothly as the new ones, and there's just a lot of advantages to start replacing those. So these are ones right now that, that really need to be replaced. And then, if you can see, the cost to replace each one of them, depending on what we put on them, is gonna run roughly between a hundred and ten thousand and a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So I'm hopeful that we'll get that okay here soon, and, and with the six million, I'd love to spread it out over five years. I, I don't think it's a good practice to purchase them all at once, because then you have to replace them all at once. So if, if there's a chance that we could get, you know, one point two million and do the first bunch, and then move forward from that, it would be awesome. So to answer your question, one of the things we're looking at is a little bit smaller buses, seventy-eight passenger. They're, they're what we call a conventional style, so it doesn't have the flat nose in front. It has, if you picture the, what a real, the school bus looks like with the nose kind of out front, it's, it's like those. And there are also, just the fact that you're going with that, we'd be, it'd be two seats less, so the ones we have now are eighty-four passenger, we're looking at seventy-eight passenger. And it's about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars less per bus. So you get quite a bit more, and you're only losing two seats, I think it's, it's almost like a no-brainer. So that's something we would, I would be promoting, that that would be our purchase for these kind of buses, the eighty-four passenger, replacing those with those seventy-eight passenger and getting a better price for them, yes?
Okay, so even in your own presentation, you said earlier that a lot of our buses are driving not full. And I see them, and I have seen them every day for years, and they don't even have seventy-eight kids. I mean, I see them driving around with six, huge eighty-four passenger buses driving around with a handful of kids. Now, what I don't know is where are they in the route? So do you have data that shows at the, at its maximum occupancy, how many kids do we have?
Yeah, we have, the drivers, they count the numbers of students every day, and I'm inputting that information each week. I'm putting that information in, so yes, I'm aware of it, and that's, that's how we have done a lot of the combining of routes, is by looking at those, and I say, "Okay, I've got three buses running into Ho-Hokum or whatever, and they're all running at twenty-five percent capacity, we're gonna, we're gonna cut one or two of those out of there and combine those." And that makes the route, the run longer, and, and it's created some other issues with some complaints for parents, you know, that, "Okay, now my child, why is my child on the bus for forty minutes now?" And they've always been getting home fifteen minutes after school's out. Okay, those are some of the things that, that I have to deal with because of the cuts we're making. So, and there's still, there's still some other buses, depending on where they're going, that aren't running full. But some of those, there's not a lot we can do, but that's what we're trying to address, is make those buses fuller.
And, and I, I get it, I hear you. My question is, are we making them full, and if so, what's that data look like? Because I sat here, and I, I, as a board member, if you're gonna, some point asks me, asks, I put an action item in front of me that says, it's gonna be the same question I had with the technology. How do I know that seventy-eight is the right number? Maybe it's twenty, maybe it's the short, short bus that we really need. Maybe we need to have a mix, a little bit more of a mix. I, that's, that's just, those are the kinds of questions I have, because when I did the analysis and comparing, this is my own analysis, Scottsdale against some of the other districts that are like Scottsdale, we were way, 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 way off on how many available seats we had versus riders, way off. Now, this was older data, I haven't done that in a while.
Yeah, and that...
But I just don't, I guess I'm, I just don't know that seventy-eight's even the right number.
Well, the, the thing, the, the thing, we don't wanna get them too small, because then you, you limit yourself, because you may have, serving one school, and maybe it's transporting forty students, which, where it's basically half-full. And then maybe the next one, and, and I've got some schools right now that are yelling at me that they want me to put more buses in there, and they're running with sixty-five to seventy kids in that bus, and I'm telling them, "No, I'm not going to," because we're not going, I'm not gonna send buses in, into areas that are not overloaded. But I have, I have some buses that are running with open enrolled kids, and we've done our best to accommodate all of those kids. We say, "If we have space, we'll, we'll take you and, and bring you in." But call Mojave, and ask them, ask them, you know, whether the buses are running full or not. They're, they're running full. Are they running full in every situation? No, sometimes they're not, but we're, we're doing the best we can to address that issue, and that's, that is what we've done up here. That's why you see so many less drivers, because we have been addressing that issue. Is it perfect yet? No, but it's, it's way, way better than it was, I can tell you that.
I'm just asking for the data.
No, I, I, I know, and I'm just trying to be honest with you, that, that we have been addressing that.
I, I did have one question, when you mentioned Mojave and the open enrollment. So I'm assuming you're, especially for Mojave, you're talking about in-district students out of boundary, correct?
Correct, correct.
And so, do, do they just simply get themselves to the bus stop that is a normal Mojave bus stop, and they're, and they're...
Correct, that's correct.
The number of people off-bound, okay. Do we have any specific routes that actually do go out of our district boundary and pick up, out of district students?
Within the district boundary still, you mean, the, within Scottsdale?
No, outside.
Oh, um, we, we used to do some up north, I'm trying to remember, I think we still make a couple of stops up there, and was it an unincorporated area?
It was an unincorporated area that now is Cave Creeks, that families, I think we've had fifty-four kids, the last I checked, that were still...
Yeah, that we, that's, that's the only one that I'm aware of outside of our boundary.
And they've asked us to stop, but we have a full bus, so we're gonna keep bringing them.
Okay, and do we have, I mean, obviously, special situations, yeah, special, whatever, not setting those aside, do we have any situations where we do somehow accommodate in-district, out-of-boundary students, where, where that bus actually goes out of, out of their boundary, and...
The, the best, the best example is, is some of our, we have some like, like Cheyenne, where it's serving, I, I can't really say they have a boundary per se, so we're, we're going, we're picking up in some areas, spread, spread around like the north part of the district there to serve some of those schools. So that's the best example I can give you of outside of their boundary. But they don't really have a boundary per se.
Right, right, choice of the bus.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes?
Board Member Beck?
I have a quick question, and I have heard from several elementary parents about the fact that... I've heard from several elementary parents, the fact that it is now taking up to forty-five, sixty minutes to get their little one home, so they are no longer taking the bus. So my first question is, are you finding that parents are no longer putting their kids on the bus because of the waits you have? And then my second question is, I said, "Well, I'll try to find out a response." So what is the response if we are asked that, that you'd like to ask to give parents, since it sounds like it's not gonna be changing?
No, it, it would not change. The only, the only school that I've heard from that, that particular situation was at Cherokee. I've heard from some, from some parents there that, "Well, I'm not gonna put them on." And, and that was at the start of the year, and honestly, I don't know if they have, at some point, now put them back on or not. But we had some, we had some changes we made over there, and then we had some real problems getting out of the school with all the parent traffic, so we were losing fifteen minutes just getting from the school down to Doubletree to try and make a right turn to start the route. So we, we rerouted the buses, made left turns out of there, and, and went down to Morning, Morning Side, I think it is, anyway. We rerouted them, and that improved the time quite a bit. So again, that was, that was way back in August, so. But that was the only school that I've really heard from that said that they, I'm not gonna have my child ride, because the ride's too long.
And so the, the response is, the response is that we really cannot do anything, because we're finding, we're trying to find efficiencies in transportation.
Right, as a matter of fact, I, I met over at Cherokee with Mr. Chandler and, and Paul over there with, with some of their PTSA, is it called PTSA anymore?
PTA, APT, they're in APT.
Okay, yeah, met with them, and we, and that was one of the things we talked about. And, and explained to them why we really can't add a bus. We had a couple buses running there with about sixty to sixty-five kids, and, and they were talking, and then we had the drivers there, too. And when they, when the kids are sitting in there, and they've got their backpacks, and their backpacks are huge, and they've got band instruments and all the other stuff, sixty-five, all of a sudden, that bus is full. I mean, it really is, the space in that bus has taken up, even though our numbers show that, okay, it's only two-thirds full. But it, it really, it's, it's pretty full.
Are the routes or the time that students are on the bus, is it shorter for elementary students than it is for high school? Do we take that into account, that parents are sensitive to having their younger children on a bus?
Yeah, gen, generally, they are anyway, because, because of the service area is, is usually much smaller than the middle schools or high schools. And, and we don't have any of our elementary routes that, that they're on there for sixty minutes.
Okay.
You know, that, they may have been the first, the first week of school, yes, but, but that's, that's not true now. All, all those kids that, the buses, and of course, they say, "Well, the bus, the school's out at three fifteen." Yeah, but we can't leave till three twenty-one, so we, we calculate the ride time from three twenty-one until, and usually by four oh five, the la, very last kids... the la- very last kids at, at our elementary schools are getting off.
To, to something that happened when my kids were in school. And it's partly because at seven AM, the bus was kinda down the street. And when I let my dog out, there it was idling for about forty-five minutes. And I remember calling up saying, this is not environmental, it's wasting gas. Nothing happened, this many years before you. Do our buses still idle for a long period of time before they go pick up the kids?
Well, funny you should mention that. Um, that is, that is an issue right now, not here, but everywhere. Especially, it's, it's Arizona. It's a hundred and ten out there in the afternoon, okay? We, we have a five-minute idle time. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I have told drivers, when it's above a hundred degrees, you can fire those things up five minutes before the kids come out. Okay, and, and, and if, and if they're idling them from, from, say, two fifteen until the kids are dismissed at, at two twenty, and then they load up and they pull out of there at two twenty-five, I'm okay with that. We installed a new GPS system that actually is a working GPS system. And one of the things that we can capture now is idle time.
Oh.
And guess what? We're enforcing it. So, so yes, we, are we perfect yet? No. But the drivers know that we are looking now and we're correcting those that are, that are doing that.
Thank you, because it wasn't just during the hot times, it was year-round. So I really appreciate that.
No, and, and I, I feel for those drivers. They're out there and it's hot and they're out there for hours at a time, yeah. So, so I'm looking at, so I'm going to something later on this month. And it's, it's some new technology that is where you can, it's a battery pack type thing that will operate. And you can operate your AC systems and all that without the vehicle running. So I'm really curious to see it. So new things are coming out and, and that may be something we look at. Because it's horrible for those people out there when it's a hundred and fifteen degrees or something. And, you know, they, they can't go anywhere. So they gotta sit out there and, and, you know, if I was sitting out there, which I was today, I'm tempted to idle it too, but I didn't.
Board Member Travis?
I just wanna clarify something, or I ask you to clarify something. With regard to our cost per mile, did I hear you say, or have I heard other people in the Auditor General's office say that trips that are taken outside of the district are, are included in our cost per mile calculation? For example, when we send, or students go to Edinburgh, Scotland, the cost of flying to Scotland, even though they're not taking a bus to Scotland-
Yes.
-that cost is, is basically, we're penalized. It seems like we're penalized-
Yes, and, and-
-for providing our students with additional educational experience.
Yeah, and I know some of the districts that are in our group we're compared with are not taking any trips to Edinburgh, Scotland. So, yes, that is, that is a part of it.
I'll talk to you later.
Okay, that's it on there. Any other questions or comments? Laura, did you have?
Board Member Travis?
Yeah.
Um, this isn't a question for you, but just a comment. If we are going to be discussing, maybe I'm stepping right into it. But if we are going to be discussing bell time schedules, you know, as an efficiency, I would be interested in looking at which school, which of our schools start at particular times, perhaps going to adjust what has been suggested here.
I'll add to that. If we have this discussion, um-
When we have this discussion-
I'm not promoting it.
I know it has not been that long that we did indeed have three bell schedules. I looked it, our elementary schools started early. I believe our high schools started next and our mail schools started last. I believe, but I'd love somebody to do some research and find out what was the last time we had this. But even started, September five, elementary started September five, and then, oh, high schools were earlier than September five?
No, high schools were later, it was elementary.
Yeah, that can't be.
I, I can go to the videotape and you'll see me talking and a whole bunch of-
No, 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 our elementary were early, our middle schools were late, and high schools had to be somewhere in the spring. Yes, I'd love to know what that was. Because, yes, when you talk about kids in their cycle, I remember our, the last time, you were a little more sense, that I were the ones who were at five thirty-two. So it was before I got, and it made sense. So that's all I'm gonna let us say. Let's question that. Board Member Kirby.
So, um, when I, when I was on the Paradise Valley Town Council, we would have to replace police vehicles, police cars and motorcycles. And there was a replacement schedule that included things like mileage. And in addition to year, which you have up there, mileage and maintenance, how many maintenance dollars we were spending-
Those, those are all things we were concerned-
Yeah, and I, I could go back and look at some old documents and see what else. But it was really helpful because it was helpful for planning for us as a council. What are we going to have to spend in future years? And then sometimes what we would find is, just because a police car had a year of two thousand and ten, it had been a spare. And so there were, there weren't that many miles on it and we could get more use out of it. And so it, it, it really helped structure how we spent our dollars over time. And I don't, I don't think we've ever had that in the district. And I don't know if you've ever had any experience building a replacement schedule like that.
Yeah.
But, but if you, if you have, it'd be something that, over, you know, something I would like to, to see for the district that will, that, that can become part of the, the normal operations for years well into the future.
Yeah, you're, you're a hundred percent right. That, those are the factors you look at.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. We move on to our next information discussion item, three E. Discussion of governing board policy manual, policies GCQA, professional staff reduction in force, GDJ, support staff and assignment transfers, and CDQA, support staff reduction in force. This is Ms. Marshall.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Birdwell and friends. Uh, I have this on a thumb drive. Do I need to? No, I don't, let me eat. There you go. Oh, here. Thank you. That's what friends are for. I will. You know, it's, I'll talk to you. Thank you. Okay. So this evening, I have three recommendations for policies for your review. This is a first read. Your item says adoption, but it should say first read. So you'll recall the last batch of doc, of policies that we discussed. You had for a first read. We brought it back to our policy development group. That batch will come back to you on the regular board meeting October seventeenth for a second read. This is a brand-new set of three policies for your first review. So what we have are policies regarding staff reduction in force. The first one is GCQA, and that's professional staff reduction in force.
Next, uh, you go for professional staff that would translate or equal to certified?
Certified, yes, thank you for that. So this would be a brand-new policy. We don't currently have this policy. We met with the same group of, of employees to discuss with the policy development group and came up with the recommendation that we have here. Let's see, we- We left in the language from the model that the number of certified staff would be determined by the board with recommendation from the superintendent. And then only if the board makes a decision that we need to look at a reduction in staff that certain criteria would apply. So in this policy, the superintendent submits recommendations for release of certificated staff. And this policy recommendation includes the recommendation that's codified in state law, which requires that we cannot use seniority for reduction in force decisions. That's specific to certified staff only, and that's in, found in state statute. Given that rule, the criteria that we would recommend looking at in a reduction in force situation would be, first, the qualifications of the staff. Then the overall teaching experience, which it is okay to use overall teaching experience. So what we've looked at in the past would be teaching experience regardless of where it was, not just in the district in terms of seniority. So that's that distinction. And then contributions to the educational program. Uh, our teachers in our development, our policy development group gave us the feedback that they had no problem with the language of this policy. They were, they wanted to, us to share with you that it was important to them that the way this gets implemented in the details in an employee handbook is important to them. They're, they were okay with the language of this policy. They look forward to working with the group that's being put together for the employee handbook.
Board Member Kirby?
Yes.
I, I just, um, I wanted to clarify one comment you made.
Yes.
That the, I think what I heard you say is the state statute says that we cannot use tenure and seniority in consideration. I just wanna clarify that this, and tell me if I'm right or wrong, that the state statute says we cannot solely use.
I would have to look up to see if it says solely. My recollection is that when it came out, we looked at, how can you recognize that a teacher has experience in making those decisions, but not use seniority in violation of the statute? If you wanna give me a second, I can look it up. And I can look it up tonight before, before we're done.
You don't have to do it right now. You can just get back to me.
That's an important distinction, though, and I, I will look that up. I just don't recall off the top of my head if it was solely.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hartman.
And I'm just gonna add on that, because when I read it and then I saw it over, my thoughts actually were captured in the support staff.
Right.
But it's, my thought, my question was, all other things being equal, then it can be used?
Let me look at these precise language and make sure that I have that right before I answer you. But I will look that up and get, get back with you.
For both, really?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on this one? Yes.
It has, says personnel to be released shall be notified as soon as practical. Are there no dates or timeframes in the statute as far as guidance?
That's correct. There's no deadline for us to do this notification in terms of a reduction in force.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Board Member Hartman?
Sorry.
Sure. Um, so when I was reading through this, obviously, you want, always want something like this to be as clear as possible. So just some considerations. Actually, there's, do you want questions like this or comments?
Absolutely, yes, please.
Um, there's four bullet points. The last three bullet points really are sub-bullet points to the first one. So it ends with the criteria-
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah, so it should kinda be indented there. And then, um, just as simple as we can make it, I'd encourage us to do that. So I thought the second bullet point was a little bit confusing. Qualifications and certification of staff members to accomplish the district's educational program, including certification requirements for specialty categories and designation as a qualified teacher. So, it, yeah, it's just a little, yeah, it's just confusing. I mean, to me, there's two things that I think I'm reading in here. It's saying- Yeah, it's just confusing, just, yeah.
Okay, and, and what I'm thinking is that that came from the model. But we can certainly, uh, work on making that more clear. I understand what you're saying. It, it is a little bit of a convoluted sentence. And maybe the educators in the room can help me. But I, I would imagine that specialty categories would be things like special education, certification, and gifted. Okay. But we can- But we can work on that language and make it more clear. I, I understand what you're saying.
And I would add that to the third bullet point. I understand what overall teaching experience that means. That means you have twelve years' teaching experience overall in the state of Arizona.
Right.
And is it only in the state of Arizona or do you get to include other states?
It can be anywhere.
Academic training, so if they've had so many hours of PD or if they have any other credentials behind them. But what's ability mean? How do you define that?
Good question. One could say that ability might be a subjective standard. One could say that you could look at somebody's past performance, records. Yeah, okay.
I would just, I guess I'd add, I'd be careful there. I, I mean, every situation is different, every riff is different. To define ability by their, their rating, are they highly performing, you know, that type of thing, it, it just may not be as clear-cut at all times.
Then define what ability means, because right now, somebody reading this does not know what they need to do or what the expectation is even. Because I don't, and I don't have enough experience with riffs, but the teachers would. So I would think that they could, I mean, I just don't know.
There is ability and, yes, contribution, contribution of the district. I don't basically say it. Because if you're done, if you're done based on the actual- I, I just think to be able to look at some level of performance and, and it's- It's dangerous for me to perfectly define that. The level of performance, the level of contribution to the site, um, it, it does, it's, in some ways may have to be subjective to it.
I'm not arguing whether it's subjective or not, but it didn't say level of performance.
What is it that we mean by quali- qualification? Okay. Okay.
Board Member Hartman?
So, Ms. Marshall, you talked about the feedback you received from the committee was, they were generally comfortable with the direction of this policy. But they were particularly interested in the handbook implementation. So what's left for the handbook? I thought our goal is to either have it in policy or handbook. So what, what still needs to be addressed outside of policy in a handbook?
So the general philosophy we've been going by is that the policy will set out the intent and the overarching broad philosophy. And the handbook, to the extent it's needed, will talk about how do we implement, if it's, if it's needed beyond a regulation.
So for example, when it says, shall be notified as soon as practical, is practical an implementation? Point that gets addressed in a handbook? I'm just not sure what's left for a handbook.
I don't think that point would be something that we would define any further in a handbook. I mean, as soon as practical's gonna be under the circumstances.
I'm gonna jump in a little bit, correct me if I'm wrong. But what would be next is addressing the fact that, yes, in, in the DEA, there was a date given, if I'm correct, by the time, there was a deadline that they had to be notified if there would be rift. Then they also had a process to determine who would be ripped. And that, of course, led us to the purple sheets. So there was a very specific process where they tried to take, to take the process and make it as objective and just check off as you could. And, and now we do- make it as objective and just check off as you could, and, and now we do not have that process in place, we don't have that practice in place. And that's, to me, what would be next, is where does this philosophy take us in that, in most changes? And those are, I, I agree, that's going to be a big significance to our teaching staff.
Okay. So my takeaway in this policy, in terms of what we're saying as policy, is performance is important.
Yeah.
That's, that's what this policy is saying.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm okay with that. I mean...
Okay.
Next one.
Any other comments on this one? Okay. So the corresponding policy that applies to support staff is GDQA. Again, this is a brand-new policy to the district. We do not currently have this. The group generally liked the model, except that, the model, and I can pull that up for you if you like, had some language in there about having the board determine the number of staff, support staff that were needed in the district annually. In our discussion in the policy development group, we felt that that would be impractical in, to, to implement in that way. And so the consensus of the group was that they liked what is Gilbert's current version of this policy, and that's what I have in front of you right now for, for support staff reduction in force. And again, I can pull up the model if you want to see that specific language that they felt they didn't want to include in our recommendation. So again, in the event the board makes a decision that we need to release support staff members, then we have, everybody really liked this first bullet point here about attrition. They liked the idea that maybe we could accomplish whatever the district's needs are by attrition and not having to ask people to leave. And then after that, if that doesn't accomplish the goal, then the next four bullet points there: qualifications, in terms of accomplishing the district program, overall experience, past contributions, and then all other factors being equal, which you mentioned earlier when we were talking about professional staff, length of service in the district. We did have a little bit of discussion about the fact that that's permitted for support staff when it's not permitted for certified, but the group did not have an issue with leaving that language in there. And then it's got that language again about specialty categories. You know, we figured that that would be to allow, you know, people with special skills such as an electrician and that kind of thing, if, if they're more of a hard-to-fill kind of position. And again, it's got that same language of notifying employees as soon as practical, once decisions are made. Did you, are there comments about that?
Or remember Beck?
I just have, I'd like one clarification, so I'd know that.
Sure.
This is for if you're going to be doing a larger-than-one-person-or-a-position reduction.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So why do you include attrition for support staff, but you don't include it for professional certified staff?
You know what? We didn't have that discussion. It was not in the model policy, and we didn't have that discussion in the group. We can certainly bring that, yes.
Or remember Kirby?
I'm certainly no expert in this, in that, I wish Pam were here, because she could probably jump in, but I don't, what, when is the date, when is the last possible date a teacher has to sign their contract for the next year?
I believe we currently have a 10- or 15-day return, or the contract is deemed not accepted. So there's not a, a date, like an April 15th.
It just depends on... It just could be a timing thing.
Right.
Of, of when teachers normally tell us they're not coming back versus when a riff, due to planning for budgets and everything else, needs to happen.
Right.
Because when we, you've not been through a riff before, but that start, that, those discussions start happening February, March, and...
A riff is a plan, is a financial, a riff, so during the financial planning time period. And it creates a system of surplus. So there are teachers who are surplus, and some of you can start a couple of them. I want to, did you hear a very specific question along the topic? Anyone not, you know, you...
The question is, even if you are going to be looking at a riff, you would still maybe go out and say, hey, is anybody, you would look at attrition first. Is anybody planning on retiring? And that's not in here, yet it's in the staff.
Right, right, yeah.
So, so you would do that first, because you would want to know. I only have to riff 40 people.
Right.
If 10 people said, hey, I'm taking retirement this year.
So the big part of it is, because you're typically a chief, so that's why they're fully in, it's a procedural practice. The first thing you do is you look at anybody who's on what's called interim contract. So they hired out, the school year started the contract, and they're not going to see the job going forward. That's the first one. The second group is, are there any retirees, are there any needs of absences? And what districts typically do is you give an incentive to say, you know, we will keep your, your insurance all the way to end of June 30th, but you will please notice us in advance if you're planning on doing. There are also other policies that tie to retirement, that you have so many weeks to notice us, the ARAs is tied to that as well. So that, that, you look at all those first, and then you produce the old man and surplus list. So surplus creates, I've got too many teachers in this building, but I have old teens in this building. So then you go through replacement process. Now, the replacement, now, you might go to a riff list. So all of that happens, and then...
So why would you...
So to that point, when I was looking at GCQA and GDQA, certified versus classified, actually, I don't know all the legal implications, but it seems to me they're actually pretty similar.
Right.
And the more, I think you can make it similar, the better, because that's just a practical view. And quite frankly, the GDQA versus GCQA, I think, was written much cleaner. So I would just really just compare the two and just figure it out if there should or shouldn't be any more simplification and consistency.
Okay.
Or remember Kirby?
From a, from a practical perspective, classified personnel, we can hire them into the summer for the following school year, because, we just do, that's been our practice historically. Certified personnel, we're asking them to sign their contracts for the following year, for the next school year, back in April and May, right? The hiring process starts in March and April. So to say, let's treat them the same, I think is, is really, I, I would want HR to weigh in on the timing, because I don't think we can.
You need to, so the policy that we put in for support staff is above and beyond. You, we are, you know, we're, we're saying we have hourly employees, and then you have certified, you have contracted certified employees. Contracted and certified employees fall under a different set of rules and laws and stuff for it. Hourly employees, by our mission, evidently, and you're done. It's an, an hourly employee does not have the rights of certification. So under riffing, we don't have to take hourly employees to being...
No.
There's no requirement. We go above and beyond to require them to sit.
Right, but that's what you're writing for. You're telling them that, that, is that what you're, I don't know, I'm asking, is that if you're an hourly employee, they fall under, then, this policy, right? Because there's not a separate one for hourly versus non-hourly?
Classified or...
But, no, you, I thought, you were, you were, had two designations under...
Professional staff refers to teachers, is that what you're...
No, no, no.
Professional is, the support is classified, professional is certified.
But then you said there's non-hourly.
Well, there, there are...
There's two classifications under this staff.
There are classified support staff that are called exempt, and they're contracted. That's a contract.
And so they don't fall under this?
No.
Oh.
If they're contracting employees have one set of rules, and hourly employees have a separate set.
So I'm not trying to be difficult, then, why did you bring them up if they're not under this policy? Because that's, I, I, then I'm confused.
I'm not sure I understand.
I guess you got into a little bit of a...
Did you, did...
So are you questioning why we have a support staff, we have support policy, if they...
If we don't have to go through a process.
...process, is that what you're asking? Well, because when you start making the distinction between the out, hourly and the non-hourly, you got confused, well, how this applies to them.
I'm a classified employee, but I have a contract because you wouldn't want this...
Oh, but you're not certified.
I'm not certified.
Oh, okay. I'm deciding how this applies. Yeah, I'm deciding.
Okay.
Or remember Beck?
I have a question with regard to GDQA.
Yes.
It says, "normal attrition due to terminations will be relied upon as the first means of reducing the staff." Is that saying normal attrition will be relied upon? I mean, due to term, like attrition is one thing, and termination...
Right.
...is another thing in, in my mind, so I'm like, there seems to be a conflict going on in my head right now.
Right. So I believe, I didn't write the model, but I believe that when they say termination here, they don't mean somebody was fired, just employment, the employment ended in those terms. But again, that is another piece of language that could be clearer.
Yeah, could we clarify that for people like me?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We can just say, "normal attrition will be relied upon."
Okay, thank you.
And leave that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are giving me some good notes. Anything else? Okay. Sorry, I was trying to look up the statute at the same time we were having the discussion. It's 15502, I believe. Are you there?
Of course. Wow. And speaking with, back 2001, and it was...
Oh, I was thinking it was more recent than that, 15502. Okay, let me go ahead and pull up the third one while we're trying to multitask. So then the final policy for a first read is GDJ, support staff assignments and transfers. This is another brand-new policy that we do not currently have. Everybody in our develop, policy development group liked the ASBA model, so that's what we're recommending to you. The main change that we made here was just adding "or designate" after the, I'm trying to find the link, oh, here we go. Just for, you know, what works in, in real life, the superintendent "or designate" shall have the responsibility for assignment of all personnel, so if it's a principle in the appropriate circumstance. And then the policy just sets forth the principles that assignments are based on the needs of the district. It lets staff know that they are, they have the ability to apply for positions, whether, whether they're, I'm looking for the language here. Where is that?
Professional staff...
This one is support staff assignments and transfers. Yeah.
That's the only one that you can see.
Yes. That's the only one, that's the only one that, right. Right. Oh, here's the language. Staff members may apply for transfer or reassignment whether there's a vacancy or not.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Is there a difference between tran, what's, what is the difference between transfer and reassignment?
That's a good question.
So may not one be transferred to...
So transfer is elected and reassignment's unelected?
Reassignment may not be elected.
Okay.
But, go ahead.
Not withstanding, you mean at all. School district should have a policy that provides a planner, potential priority, for teachers based on tenure or senior.
Yeah.
And that's carried.
Right. And that was my recollection, that they were, the legislature at that time was kind of like...
Purple sheet.
Yeah.
In 2009, the policy did some process, so it's...
Well...
Well, the purple sheet, I think, was...
Basically, the purple sheet allows for...
An attempt, yes. It was an attempt to address the language. It was, yeah.
On my, on my...
Yes.
That's very vulnerable. So that's, yeah.
Still...
I lost my place, let's see. What I, what we, we all really liked about this policy is that it talks about, you know, in the end, any kinds of conflicts over whether somebody should be reassigned or transferred. We look to what's in the best interest for the instructional program, the needs of the students, and the overall needs of the district as defined by your leader, the superintendent. Or, well, or designate where it's appropriate. We didn't put designate everywhere. Any other, any comments about this one? Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will take all your really good comments and do my best to make these better. Thank you.
Thanks.
We won't be seeing a set item.
No, you will not.
We will see the others that we have by...
Yes. That's correct. And those will be in action in case you want to have any discussion about the next meeting we had in the interim with the group. Yeah.
Okay, we will move on to our action item for a group of, for your 2016, 2017 annual financial report.
I'll make a motion, if we're ready.
And any discussion, nope. I'm sorry, you made a motion to...
I'll make a motion. Although we'd love, we'd love to hear from you, but...
You're on fire today.
We got you. I'll make a motion to approve the FY 1617 AFR.
One second. Thank you, Morgan Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I, we pass this by zero. You have a lovely picture.
So moved.
Thank you, Morgan, sir, a second. Second, you have a lot in favor?
Aye.
We pass this by zero. Thank you.
Sorry. Laura Surfe, you meet it.